To proceeding with the budget hearing. All right, we're ready. All right, can I get a motion to open the budget hearing for a second reading?
Moved.
I've got a motion by Mr. Patterson, a second by Mr. Masterson to open the budget hearing. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and the budget hearing is open. And we're going to begin, I am sorry for my voice this morning. We're going to begin with Mary Ann Peters from Solid Waste. Good morning, Mary Ann.
Good morning. I brought you some additional propaganda. This is our annual report, but it includes all of the materials that we collected last year, which is always very eye opening. Kudos to the residents of Marshall County who are very responsible with their council hazardous waste and recycling. So I'll let you guys read that at your leisure, but it just gives an overview of what we've been up to, our programs, some of the things we collect, most importantly, my awesome staff who are very dedicated and get us all the good Google reviews. Also, just some information about where the recyclables go that we collect. Happy to say they all stay here in the United States. I was just at a recycling conference on Tuesday, and Indiana is really, in some ways, for domestic recycling, we are a growing region for recycling, recyclables and manufacturing that uses post-consumer recyclables. So I thought that was really great news for Indiana in terms of manufacturing and recycling. So as far as our budget goes, we did have a bit of an increase this year. We decided to increase our hours. This was a discussion we had with our board early in the year, I think it was February or March. We've seen our activity at the recycle depot increase by 35%. We have a lot of people using us for recycling now because it is free, and I think it's a great indication of how much people want recycling to be part of their waste management practices. But it is expensive. It's expensive to hire, you know, to have it come, you know, do it by prescription or subscription and have it come curb site. So we do have over 100 people a day using us for recycling. I would say the average is 73, but it's not unusual for us to have over 100 people a day visit us. And then we, that does not include the people that come to the door with their paint, their batteries, their, you know, their Thompson's water seal and their, you know, their unknown chemicals from their grandpa's barn. So, so we did decide, we did decide to increase our hours. It gives us a half an hour before we're open and a half an hour after we close. That extra half an hour in the afternoon is especially useful because it gives us a chance to just eyeball everything, make sure everything is closed up, that nothing is leaking, everything is secure. We don't want to leave anything hazardous sitting out overnight while we're not there. So, so that did increase our budget quite a bit, our personnel budget especially. And we are also paying twice as much to dispose of our electronic waste as of July. They increased it by, they doubled it actually, which was very unexpected. But other than that, things are fairly consistent, just, just an increase in personnel particularly.
Mary Ann.
Yeah.
As I look at these numbers, and you know, with you, I'm on your board and I have a lot of, lot of respect for your staff and what they do, but when I'm looking at this, tires, 36 tons.
I know.
Of tires, okay? And, and you know, hazardous materials, your 10 tons electronics, 45 tons. So she, we did enact a fee for the tires to increase that, and also a fee for the TVs to kind of offset part of those costs. But it is just amazing to me, you can be there for a meeting, and the meeting's 30 minutes, and you see 20 cars driving around the building. It's very well utilized and just want to let you know that.
Thank you.
Appreciate you and the job they do out there.
Thank you.
And we go out there making our trips too, but we don't wear hazmat suits. We don't bring you stuff that's smoking out the back of the vehicle, so.
Well, one thing to be aware of too is tires and electronics are really a lot to handle. Tires have to be lifted and stacked, and the guys are very, very particular about how they stack their tires. We call it tire Tetris. And, and electronics themselves are, they come in every shape and size, they're heavy, they're unwieldy. Televisions have to be stacked on pallets and shrink wrapped, and TVs are all shapes and sizes. And, and so it's, it's a handling fee in some ways because it's, it's hard work and awkward work, and, and that stuff is coming in the door every day, and we don't know what it's going to be, you know? It's always, it's always a mystery.
You pick up that tire and realize it's half full of water?
Right, right.
Or a mosquito nest.
Or a mosquito larva. That's, that's one thing about tires, they're very, very prone to, you know, they, they, they keep that, that mosquito larva in the spring, and that causes West Nile virus. It's, you know, they're very nasty, they're very nasty. Do you guys have any questions at all about our budget or our work or anything that I can answer?
I've utilized you in the past, thank you.
Good. I, I welcome you all to come out and visit, especially this time of year, it gets a little creepy in the depot. My people love Halloween. And I don't, I, I don't have anything to do with that. That sucks, but.
So just, just for the record, for the folks at home, you guys do have your own property tax rate, that's where your revenue comes from?
We do, we have our own, we are allowed to have our own levy.
Yep.
We also provide all of our own benefits and insurance as well. We're, we're separate from the county in that, in that way.
So you're writing checks every week.
Unfortunately, yes.
And so we are, we are the binding unit for oversight on their budget because they get a property tax rate, so, yep. It looks like your budget in total is $542,532?
That's right.
And is there a motion?
Motion. So moved, I make a motion that we accept their, their budget as presented.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox and a second by Mr. Faustus to approve the budget for Solid Waste. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and the budget is approved.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate you, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
And this is one of those that we do not do multiple readings on, right? This is just a, this is a final vote on that, right?
You'll accept it at your next.
Okay, so we will.
Yeah, there'll be an ordinance at the next meeting.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you. Oh, no, I haven't.
And up next, we've got Marshall County Tourism with their 2025 budget. For the record, this is basically going to be discussing how they're going to spend the, the innkeeper's tax, which we permit them to receive, so.
Good morning, Brian Teal, Marshall County Tourism Board President, and I brought along Wyatt with me today, Stefan.
Wyatt, Stefan, Vice President, Tourism Commission.
All right, welcome.
Yeah, so I hope the following summary will kind of encapsulate the commission's focus on reestablishing a legal foundation, securing financial operations and kind of relaunching marketing efforts to promote tourism here in Marshall County, while establishing a new nonprofit entity to perform the daily functions for promoting our Marshall County community. Just so you guys have some timelines and some historical understanding of what's going on, you know, we were actually appointed in April, I think towards mid, end of April, is that correct, Wyatt? We actually had our first meeting May 23rd, and we've had about a half dozen meetings since then, so we've been meeting frequently to get everything going. Obviously, us walking into the situation, we didn't know what to expect. So do all of you know kind of how the original commission and the relationship between the CVB worked? Yes, no?
Probably not, I did not know until you explained it to me, so.
So basically, the commission is a fiduciary body. It oversees the money that gets collected, and then it passes it over to the CVB, in this case, it was Visit Marshall County. So they're actually two separate entities, and I knew kind of some of it since my mom had served on the nonprofit side for a few years. I knew other people that served on the Visit Marshall County side, but I didn't know the relationship between the commission. So once we got on the board, we did some investigating, isn't that correct, Wyatt?
That's right.
Okay, to kind of understand that relationship. So what happens is, the commission receives that money from the innkeeper's tax from the county, right? Then they take the money and pass it to the CVB. Once it leaves the commission's hands, it, they have no oversight over it. It goes to the nonprofit. We have no idea, with the old CVB, obviously, we don't have any access to what they were doing with the money. We don't have any historical data. Because our commission members were not members of the CVB, we have no idea of any kind of historicals. We've tried to reach out, it doesn't look like they want to continue a relationship. So, and to my knowledge, they have not yet dissolved either. So that's where we're at the point of having to go back and reestablish a new nonprofit. When we walked into this, the old commission members had shut the bank account, so we actually had to go through the process of establishing a new bank account and going through that whole matter. We literally had no money. So it's been a, quite a ride to kind of understand and reestablish the commission, along with going through the process of understanding how to reestablish a new CVB, so.
Can I interject?
Go ahead.
Just real quick, so that everyone is aware that the Tourism Commission, even last year's, the previous commission, is subject to State Board of Accounts, that has been a request to have them audited because all of this happened in '24, that will not happen until next year. The Bureau, the nonprofit side, is also subject to State Board of Accounts audit, and that will also happen as a separate audit from the county. So both of those will have some oversight from the state, from the commission, the previous commission and the previous Bureau, as well as the current commission and the newly created Bureau.
Correct.
Just so everybody is aware, there is some oversight.
I'm going through like a, yeah, very broad summary, trying to, you know, we only, we don't want to keep you guys here all day because we could probably do that, but in a nutshell, basically, the way it used to work is, the CVB members were also the Tourism Commission members. So there was a direct conflict of interest, in my opinion, there, when they're passing money to themselves, yeah. Go ahead, Adam.
None of that information was given to you guys when you reformed, Gary?
Obviously not, because, well, we wouldn't know that because the new state statute, from my understanding, Angie, correct? There was a new state statute that came into play, so the commissioners were too tasked on reforming the commission. And then when that happened, I'm sure they, they didn't even know, they didn't remove the nonprofit board, that was still in place. All they did was replace the commission members.
They, the nonprofit, the county has nothing to do with.
Exactly.
So we could not have done anything with that.
Exactly.
The, the commission had a contract with the nonprofit, which we voided. So, so what we received from the old commission was maybe some minutes, their 2024 budget and that contract, which we voided.
And they do have to submit, there are several departments and Tourism Commission, this commission will have to do this next year, they do have to submit a supplemental annual financial report to my office in January. That report is part of our annual financial report that goes to State Board of Accounts, and as you all received the email yesterday from State Board of Accounts, we did have a clean audit, and that, I am very proud of my staff, and I would just like to interject that, did an amazing job getting that done. But they will submit that supplemental AFR to our office. We received that from the previous commission, so it's not that we haven't received that information necessarily. It's just very vague on the details of what happened. We received what was statutorily required, the details is where it gets fuzzy.
Yeah, so when we came in, they had a December dispersment, then that, and it appeared to be in January, they moved the money from the commission's account to the nonprofit, and then closed the account sometime in January, I think February, I'd have to go back and look for exact dates. At that point, the commission no longer actually had an account. We don't know where their December dispersment money went, or prior, I heard that they had been saving money towards a visitor center, and I can't give you the exact amount, I'd be guessing, but I've heard somewhere in the north of $700,000 that they had for the CVB. But I can't tell you for sure.
So it's possible we may get some more information on this when they have to account with State Board of Accounts next year, but.
They could, but again, and we tried reaching out to Jessica Beatty, we had some initial contact, and then nothing. I have no idea where their documents are, their financial documents or anything. We do not have access being not on that board. So I just want to give you guys a historical kind of understanding, so you knew what we walked into and are working from. Okay, to be fair. So from that point, we had our establishment meeting on May 23rd, where we actually had an organizational meeting. We elected officers, so myself's the president, Wyatt here's the vice president, Angel Ballsley's our secretary, and Tracy Huyens the treasurer. We also have Mark DeMore from Culver, he owns the restaurant. I think most of you are familiar with Mark, great guy. We also have Matt Hoovermel from Swan Lake, he's part of the ownership team there, awesome guy as well. And then we also have Jim Harton, who's appointed by the mayor's office here in Plymouth, and he's a wonderful gentleman too. He's involved in a lot of different community aspects, so. Again, that was our first meeting, we kind of went over everything that had transpired, some of the information that I had received by doing some initial investigation work, talking with past board members, past commission members that I knew, talking with some commissioners, as well as, I believe I talked to Jesse and Tim, maybe even Jim a little bit, to kind of get a better historical idea. After that, we've definitely placed a significant focus on the nonprofit, but we realized we needed to establish a bank account so we could get our June dispersment. So we opened a bank account at Centaur Bank. Our June dispersment was, what, $215,000 and some change? And we put it into a money market account there, so we could actually, with being a fiduciary responsibility, we felt that was the best, so we can make some interest on the money to help out further activities. So we did that. Let's see, we got a checkbook, some of the things that we needed to do was, we needed legal representation. We started off with Jim Clevenger, we knew Jim was looking possibly retiring, so we kind of did some research, and we felt that Sean Cerici would be the best fit our needs. So we went into it, retained Sean's legal services and counsel for us as a commission. We thought that was a good move, so. From then, we started looking at, trying to figure out how we could be supportive of establishing the new nonprofit. We looked at different, different CVBs, causeioscos specifically, since it's adjacent to us and similar in size. We worked with them, we figured out kind of the pitfalls of how the old way was set up with that relationship with the CVB and the Tourism Commission. We felt there's some serious conflicts there that we needed to avoid in the future, so we wanted to talk about how we could change that relationship to be mutually beneficial, if you will, and not to have this happen again. So at this point, we also didn't want to lose the fact that, lose a year's potential of not doing anything in the community. So we talked about some ideas, so we did a project with the Blueberry Festival, since we actually got that June dispersment, even though that money's going to be met for next year's budget. I'm not going to go into a ton more detail, I can talk to each of you off whenever, if you have more questions, because I could sit here all day and talk about so many more items, but I think now, talking about how we strategically place the budget, so you guys have a better understanding what we want to do going forward, yeah, we're looking at doing some trademarking as well, that's another thing. The past CVB did not trademark their logo. What we want to do going forward is, we will own it and lend it to the CVB. Traditionally, that's not how it was. So they can typically, they can actually technically walk away with anything that they create, because that was not part of the original agreement. So anything they do in our contract, we will own. So one of the things we're doing is, we're going to look at doing some of that kind of stuff, so I'll hand it over to Wyatt, I'm going to have him walk you guys through the budget and what we're going to keep going forward with.
Do you all have the budget in front, okay? So we took the strategy with the budget to, you know, set the next year's budget to equal the current year revenue. So for example, here, we're, we're looking at the 2025 total budget will equal the 2024 total estimated revenue. In the second section there, you'll see the 2023 revenue, actuals, $516,154. 2024, actuals for January through July, $218,784, representing a negative 3% change from 2023, and then to estimate the remainder of the year, I applied that same proportional decrease, arriving to a total revenue in 2024 of about $500,000, so that sets our 2025 budget. Now, in the last section there, you'll see our budget, you know, I want to note, there's not a lot of detail, we're still trying to figure out, you know, what this looks like, you know, we don't know what opportunities may arise, but you'll see, we try to strike a balance between local investment and destination development and event sponsorships, and then marketing and outreach to, to reach potential visitors and draw them in, so. The first item, Marshall County Tourism Commission, we're going to keep 40%, representing $200,000, again, for destination development, event sponsorships, research, other granting opportunities that may be brought before the board, and other operational expenses, including legal. And then our second item there, 60% distributed to this separate nonprofit to do the day-to-day marketing activities, digital marketing, print and media advertising, community outreach, staff and other operational expenses. We do anticipate that potentially up to $150,000 of that will be spent on a digital marketing campaign with an external vendor. We've received, the, the old, the old nonprofit had, had intended to contract with, is it Great Television Group?
Great Television, which owns WNDU.
Yeah, that was about $120,000 contract over 2024, so they'd likely do something like that. It's like, you know, they'd advertise through streaming, you know, social media, all the, all the digital marketing avenues, so.
Yeah, we had some concerns though, because WNDU did come down and did the presentation about their effectiveness of how they want to do to the marketing. They weren't following what they would call the traditional donut, which is, you don't really focus in the center of the donut, right? You look two, three hours out, and that's not what appeared to be the focus. I think they had some key misses, they were, looked like they were purposefully not focused on like the Blueberry Festival, Swan Lake Resort, and some other destinations in the county, where we felt these are the tourism type attractions that should be focused on. But again, that would be the new nonprofit. Like Wyatt said, one of the things, why we're looking at keeping the money, then they, they didn't do in the past, where the tourism did not keep the money, is because the CVB did everything, whereas we feel this is going to be more transparent for the public. Rather than the CVB doing the granting, the commission's going to do the granting. That way, when somebody comes in front of us and we prove $2,000 to help with advertising for a local event, people know where the money's going in the community. It's not this kind of like, the CVB gets it, and nobody knows where the money goes. We felt there needs to be a sense of transparency. We feel the CVB's full purpose should be doing the day-to-day marketing of our county and the different parts of the county to help spark more tourism and more, if you will, heads and beds. We feel that's been a miss, so. Was there more to the budget?
Nope, that's it.
So, but that's kind of what we wanted to do, is provide more transparency for the public, to you guys, we feel this is a better avenue. We're also looking at ways to, when we form the new nonprofit board, what is that going to look like? We like to make it all-inclusive for all the communities involved here, no matter size. Maybe similarly to how the commission's being appointed, where you get a certain amount of reps per area, but is it appointed by the councils or what? We feel, and this is, maybe I'm representing my opinion, but I think it's kind of the consensus of the board, the people that should be appointed to the nonprofit shouldn't be part of the local government, they should be part of the local business community that are in the business of driving tourism, and how does that look? Because that also, I felt, was a conflict of interest, when you had certain members from, you know, towns on that board, and then they're awarding money, it looked like, to, you know, and that could be an issue. So we like to see how does that look, where, how does that process of the appointment to that nonprofit board look in terms? So does that kind of give you guys a good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Historical and hopefully, understanding of what we're trying to do. Unfortunately, we're all business guy, most of us are business guys or full-time, so this is, we don't get paid for this, this is all volunteer. We've been trying to meet regularly, obviously you can see six meetings in not even three months. I think we've done a pretty good job, and I think we're on a good path forward. You guys got any questions?
Do you have a revenue projection for next year? Does anybody have that?
No.
It's okay, I just.
Here's what I'm going to tell you, is the projections we used was, we took the June dispersment this year and compared it to June's dispersment last year, and there was a 3% decrease. So we don't know if that's because there hasn't been really tourism activities going on or promoting our county, maybe that's what we've seen. We don't know if there's been a dip in heads and beds, we don't know. We've also looked, because I talked, Angie, are you looking into the issue with the Plymouth deal with the drop, the dramatic drop with the, do we talk about that? Okay. There was a big change with the innkeeper's tax being collected in Plymouth area, in Centertownship, like there was a dramatic decrease, we don't know why. We don't know if, we know some of the hotels here that traditionally were a couple nights, are having more long-term stays, if it stays more than 30 days, innkeeper's tax does not apply. So maybe some of the hotels are having longer-term stays, we knew there was a bunch of state contracts last year where guys were staying in these hotels for months. We don't get innkeeper's tax on that. So maybe that's why we saw the dramatic decrease in innkeeper's tax for Centertownship.
When do you get revenue projections for that, or when would we find out?
There are no revenue projections for that.
There's nothing.
Because it's dependent, it depends on who's staying.
Yeah, historically, it's been $500, $550,000 a year.
All of that money is collected at the State Department of Revenue. Because they have more teeth behind it, we ran into an issue several years ago where we had some not paying, so we have no authority to go after them as a county. It becomes state, state gets it, we receive the money on a monthly deposit, that money goes into a separate fund, State Board of Accounts statutory fund, and then during June and December settlement, we disperse out to the Tourism Commission based on 5%, which is the maximum that can be charged for innkeeper's tax unless you have special legislation. So it is a 5% tax based on that, and you do see increases depending on the month, I will say, once Notre Dame home games start coming, you'll see an increase in that. So it, it varies on the year, and there's really no way to tell. I can tell you during COVID, it dropped drastically on the dollars that we were getting from there, so it, it really is just kind of a stab in the dark when it comes to innkeepers.
And if revenues didn't meet the budget, you would actually have a control within your office to, to cut that off, or?
We only give them what we receive.
Okay.
And then we have to annually report that back to the Department of Revenue, what has been received by the county.
Okay.
And State Board of Accounts, that is part of our audit and part of their audit to review all of that, so there are internal controls in place.
Yeah, and since to your point, we've looked at that, just in case there's another COVID scenario, one of our objectives is, over the next five to 10 years, to, is take a percentage of the dispersment and save it back as almost like a rainy date fund, per se, because that way, if COVID happens again, or there's another type of pandemic, we can still operate from a tourism level where we wouldn't have that money coming in, as far as, if nobody's going to hotels, we're not getting revenue. So we will need some type of savings account to save money back over, you know, for potential, if that happens again, and we don't receive a year's worth of revenue, how are we going to operate?
And even if they budget more than what their cash comes in, it's no different than any other budget, you can only spend up to the cash amount. You can appropriate all day long, but if you don't have the cash balance to support it, they wouldn't be able to move forward.
We just, yeah, so, and that's where we feel it's a better control, where we're, we as a commission are keeping the money back and giving it to the nonprofit. keeping the money back and giving it to the nonprofit based off of their budget. They're going to require, we'll bring their budget once they're established and they start. Part of the requirement, we felt, that when we enter into a contract is, they're going to have to provide us their budget. And we're going to approve it, or they don't get money. That's it. That way, there is a level of control. Before, when you have them passing money amongst themselves, there's really no control. You know what I'm saying? So for us, we felt like also we want some consistency. What we talked about doing as part of our board could be on the nonprofit, but we would not be the majority and we would have no voting power. But at least then there's some synergy there where we have some consistency. Like, we talked about Matt Hoovermael, who obviously is in a tourism-type industry, running a golf resort here in Marshall County, being on that board as well, but not having voting power since he's on the commission. Along with Mark DeMore, you know, with Culver, similar, they got a restaurant. So we're trying to figure out ways that we can leverage our board as well as provide support and also oversight. Because apparently, that was not going on.
Give you guys transparency too to know what's going on.
Yeah. And I think it's key because I think before, it was kind of like, you have no idea where the money was being spent. And then when I found out they were saving towards a visitor center, was that the right move for Marshall County? I don't know. It doesn't seem like we have a lot of people that would be stopping at a visitor center.
Yeah.
Where does the majority of the money come from? What townships?
It would be center. Now, here's the issue, and Angie can attest to this. We get a line items, so we know broken out where the innkeeper's tax is coming from. However, there's a line item called market facilitator. That is actually Airbnb's. We have no idea.
B R B O, Hotels.com, Priceline, all of those vendors.
We have no idea because the state just gives it to us and on that line item, that's it, it's not broken out. So I can't tell you how much revenue from the Airbnb side or Hotels.com is coming from, like, Union, North, I have no idea. But we know from just the innkeeper's tax side, from actual hotel stays, predominantly, it's going to be center and Union where, Union, right?
That's where.
Polk, sorry. My apologies.
I don't want to belabor the point, don't want to use any more of your time, but out of curiosity, do you campgrounds, they don't pay in innkeeper's tents, do they, or they do?
They do.
Okay.
But again, the 30-day stay. Because at Jellystone, think about all the people that are there for more than 30 days if they have campers.
They pay property tax if they.
So you've got the 30-day thing there. Two, if you have a cash Airbnb out at Lake of the Woods or Culver, that's probably not getting reported to us unless they're going through a marketplace facilitator.
Right.
So, and two, it's very hard for people to assert, like, if they're saying, oh, we get so much money because of Airbnbs, there's no way they can know that unless we can get that number from the state. And I don't, I think they have NDAs down there, right? I think they'd sign NDAs with these marketplace people. So we probably are not ever going to get that information. We'll never know the exact mix of where it's coming from.
Innkeeper's tax is proprietary, so no one can share what the actual dollar amounts are. There is an agreement between the Treasurer's Office and the Department of Revenue that they can share the reports of who's paid, but that is not something the Treasurer can share with anyone else.
So we'll never know.
So those are, that is very much tied down.
All right.
Your best guess assumptions based off of activity?
The best guess is too, we can work with people that we have relationships like Matt because he will tell us, okay, I have X amount of bookings in like Hotels.com or whatever. So we can kind of guesstimate how much he's getting in with the marketplace facilitator. But for a person to just say, hey, we do this amount of money in Airbnb for a particular area, you can't do that. There's just no way you can break that down.
I think, you know, the approach we're taking here too, where, you know, the commission keeps a portion and we seek out proposals, grant opportunities, event sponsorships or destination development, I think you kind of get like a more, maybe a natural proportional split, you know. Plymouth and Culver probably could have more proposals than, you know, somewhere down in Tippecanoe, right? So I think we'll kind of get like a natural proportional split and get it where it needs to go.
We also look like, is the actual nonprofit the director who would maybe, is that a full-time job? Because if we're bringing in a marketing company like a W N D U that is developing the plan, executing the plan, how much is that person actually doing that? So we've also talked about, is that actually maybe more of a part-time position, or what does that look like? What kind of relationships can we form within the county with maybe the Chamber of Commerce's or whatnot to also help that, you know, streamline that stuff, be more cost-effective?
Yeah.
So, you guys have any other questions? Tim?
I make a motion to approve your budget as requested because you did such a thorough job.
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon, a singing by Mrs. Cox to approve the budget.
And he's the one that worked heavily on the budget.
Let me alter that. I make a motion to approve the budget that Wyatt, Wyatt, I'm joking.
No. It's been a real team effort and the rest of the people would have loved to be here today, but it was, it's been awesome work with these guys, so it's been great.
All right. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the motion is agreed to.
Thank you, council members.
Thank you.
And is this, is this a binding approval, or do they just submit this for?
This time, I need to.
We'll probably go in front of the commissioners, I think, too, as well. So, and our plan is to go in front of the different town councils, so they also have a better understanding of what's happened, and then that way they can get brought up to.
And I believe there was request for quarterly reports from, for the commissioners to.
Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, so it looks like we're moving on to the county budget.
Well, obviously, we're going to go page by page, line by line if necessary. Mr. Chairman, you want to lead the discussion, starting with page one, page two?
Well, just as a, from a 50,000-foot view, the budget is already in balance when we look at our revenue projections, correct?
Yeah.
It depends on what fund you're looking at. There are some funds that are.
I should say, the general fund.
The general fund is by accepting the wage-by-category sheet that you did earlier. We will adjust the wages and salaries and perf based off of that. So you would not necessarily need to cut that today specifically, and then we'll get those numbers out to you guys well before your October 10th meeting, so you can take a look at those. So that would eliminate going through your wage area of the budget.
All right. And then I will, I will defer to your direction on the screen here, so. So it looks like we're looking at the commissioner's budget.
So all of us are looking at pages. Do we not want to go by page by page?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, as opposed to by the screen, okay. So, Mr. Chairman, starting with page one, I want to make some recommendations.
Very good.
Then we'll flip to page two, and you can obviously go down that order as well.
Yeah, what you're seeing on the screens is Gateway, that is live, actual data. So as you make your cuts, we'll adjust it in Gateway. That way, we are guaranteeing that, or ensuring that we're correct in what we're doing. So what you're going to see is going to be slightly different than your sheets, but it's the same numbers. It's just a matter of, so if you give us what's on the sheet, we can find it on Gateway.
Okay. A quick statement, last year, we took the knife to the budget pretty good, and we sliced off like 1.1 million. Well, that's reflecting in this year's budget too, because the department has a lot of them are going by last year's numbers. And overall, in this budget, I didn't, I didn't see a lot. My goal is always to keep roughly a $2 million balance in the general fund, revenues minus expenses. We're at about 1.45 or 1.55, I can't recall, budget as presented. I think we had seven, almost $18 million of projected revenues and 14, or I'm sorry, 16 and a half roughly in requests. So it'd be my goal to cut it roughly a half a million to get to that $2 million cushion. I think going forward, it's good to have a cushion and maybe a consistent amount, just in your minds. Beginning with page one, I didn't do anything on page one, and obviously, the other members can weigh in, and you can lead that discussion, Ms. Rich.
Their professional services line is on page one, is that correct?
Professional services is on page one, and they requested 40,000, the same as last year.
So we might, we might have a debate on this one.
Okay, go for it.
There is a line in the planning department's professional services for a comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And I would like to move that money from the planning department into the commissioner's budget.
Okay.
We weren't going to bid $100,000 on the.
Right, just 35,000, yeah. So I'd like to, I'd like to reduce the planning commission's budget accordingly as we get there, but I'd like to increase the commissioner's budget by 35,000.
Okay.
35,000.
So 75,000 for professional commissioners.
Is there objection? All right.
I did have one question on page one. Typically, in the past, there's been money moved from that group health insurance, but with the self-insurance difference, or I see there's, there's a big number there. So is all that money going to be needed?
I added up all the funds, and it comes to, there's seven, approximately seven funds that pay into the insurance pool. And when I added them all up, it was real close to the 3.3 million self-insurance fund number. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, so we're on pace right now to spend that budgeted amount for this year. And it's, and it's right on, right on track, and it's looking really good. So I didn't touch any insurance numbers in the entire budget to be, you know, forthcoming.
And we don't have rates for next year yet.
Yeah.
Those don't usually come until October.
Okay.
So historically, those come after the budget's approved and.
Convenient.
Yeah, so the, so the auditor's office recommended that we not touch the health insurance numbers, and that was also Mr. Dalton's recommendation as well, so.
That's my question.
And obviously, that was, in, in previous years, I think we cut, what, $400,000 from that, so that's.
Yeah.
That's probably why we're not going to see as many cuts this year is because that was a large portion of what we had done previously.
It's a new fund, it's a little bit, the data, we don't have a lot of history on it, and we're in uncharted waters. But hopefully, we will get some reimbursements back next year, maybe later this year, maybe the first of next year. And that money could be used for, you know, other things that are unexpected, or again, helping fund some public safety or whatever we need to do. But I had nothing on page one, but your alteration is to increase it, so. I can lead the discussion if you'd like to, Mr. Chairman.
Go for it, yep.
Page two, I made some minor cuts. Postage, I just dropped it $2,000 to 78,000. Again, I'm trying to get that number down to about a $2 million cushion.
So we want to cut postage?
Postage, I got from 70, from 80 to 78.
We haven't spent that, so.
Training. I want to give a haircut on that one, if you don't mind. 2,500 to 1,500. We expect new commissioners next year to be diligent in.
We got to pay for our own training.
That was my question. We have two new trainers, two new commissioners coming in, do we need to cut that because of?
You just approved an additional appropriation of $1,500 to go into training this year because there wasn't enough to cover training. And I will say, if all of the receipts are turned in and are not paid for by the commissioners, because a lot of times commissioners have paid for their own training, if receipts are turned in, this won't cover.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I expect I'm going to need some training if I'm in that spot, so.
So would it be wise to keep it at 2,500?
Maybe need to go more.
Hey, I'm just a guy.
I'm going to veto that action.
With a pencil.
I'm going to veto that action.
Objection heard.
What do you want to do, Mrs. Cox?
I would like to leave it at 2,500. With two new commissioners coming in, I think that we need to have opportune training for those individuals so that they can take, take that, because if the funds aren't there, there may be a reason not to do training, and I think training's super important. I've learned a ton going to county council training, and I think it's important.
So be it. Trash and hauling recycling, I gave it a $2,000 haircut to 18,000. I'm basing these numbers on past and what we spent.
Is there objection?
And it's a, it's a 20% increase over last year's budget, even to, even to trim it.
All right, without objection.
Here's when I don't understand park maintenance, but.
Park maintenance is the chief manominee statute. That's our chief manominee statute. That's for mowing and upkeep.
Oh, I'll leave it. If anyone else wants to touch it, they can touch it.
All right. Anything else on that page?
I'm going to be honest, I'm just going to put it out there, this is kind of the elephant in the room. Economic development, $150,000. I have a hard time taking our county council member, our taxpayers' dollars and placing it into economic development because we've received absolutely zero response. We've not had any quarterly reports. In 2022, when I was watching, we received quarterly reports for both commissioners and council. I've asked for quarterly reports three times over the last two years, and I've received nothing. So I have a hard time saying, okay, taxpayers, how are we justifying the expenditures of your dollars? Because I don't know how it's being spent, and it's recorded, so no one knows how that money is being spent. This is one I've been dealing with, and I've been really rolling around, I've done a lot of research, and I still don't have an answer. I do know that in 2022 and previous years, we paid it out quarterly, and I would like to go back to that. I don't think that is something that the council can, like, legally ask, but I think that's something that we can request of the commissioners next year. Could they pay it out quarterly? And maybe that would give an incentive to bring us a quarterly report.
I, I feel where you're at on that, I agree with you. And I'd like to cut that number to 37,500 and then come back for an additional appropriation following the first quarter of next year if our expectations are met. So that would be the first quarterly installment that could be paid in January, and then we could look at it again, or you all could look at it again following that.
Okay. What was that number again, 37,000 what?
Basically a fourth.
I'm going to, I'm going to dissent on that one. I think that the 150,000 on an annual number has been a steady number for the last five, 10 years. I reached out to one of the board members who basically stated, without any data, but I trust this board member. Before we had Marshall County Development, we were in a different place, we're much better off. With Marshall County Development, I would leave the number at 150 and give the commissioners the authority, obviously, to pay the claim at the amount quarterly. So that's where I'm at on this number. We don't always have to agree, do we?
Is there debate?
So we'd have a checks and balances if we only budget 37,500, whereas it throws into the commissioner's side for a checks and balance is what I see this as.
All right.
It's like it's taking the fiscal responsibility away from us and putting it on the commissioners.
Yeah. Is there further debate?
What are we contractually obligated to do?
That's a good question.
That's my biggest question.
I've not seen the contract, and like I said, just if we choose not to fully fund it at this point, that doesn't mean that the council next year can't do an additional and bring it up, you know? So I, obviously, I haven't seen the contract, so.
My thought is, at this point, you leave it this way, and you watch it next year to see if there is an issue for the following year, and then you handle it accordingly after that. No, and I, I know where you're coming from.
Yeah, because I had this issue last year, and I thought that's what I was going to do this year, and I still haven't received any quarterly reports.
I know.
So, it's fascinating.
I'm kind of like with Tim, I think I would kind of leave, leave it there for what it is right now. I'm kind of like with Tim. I think I would kind of leave, leave it there for what it is right now. We don't know what their obligations are monthly out there. I'd hate to short that. Our responsibility is the fiscal responsibility for this. So I don't know why we'd want to flip it over to the commissioners because we're wanting them to come to us if they want additional money.
Well, we're talking for next year though, so this year they'd be, they would have their funding, correct?
They already got all of it in January.
They have twenty, yeah, but this is four twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was paid in.
In the last year, we paid it in January.
Yeah.
But in 2022, when I went back and looked at, at the numbers, it was paid quarterly. And I would like to see it go back to that.
So what I'm saying is they'd have their money for this year already, so you're looking at the next year.
Right.
So you'd actually be looking at almost a year and a half out with what you're saying, Jim, before you'd have any accountability.
Unless the commissioners just say we're paying this quarterly, because am I correct, Angie, in saying that, that we cannot state that we want it paid quarterly? That's something that the commissioners would need to decide.
Correct. The commissioners are over the claims. You guys, you guys provide the funding. They have to determine if the project is what they are wanting to pay the, the claim for it. So they would make that determination.
All right.
Okay.
Well, it seems like we've got some division here, so I think we're going to vote on this. So the, the proposal is to reduce the number for economic development to thirty-seven thousand five hundred with the potential for an additional appropriation next year.
Real quick, before we make a motion or vote this up or down. Depending what the contract reads, we could end up with egg on our face if we vote one way or another on this. Because that contract, if it, depending how it reads, because I don't have any idea what it says, may make this null and void anyway.
Well, we do have two additional opportunities to make cuts as well. We don't have to do everything today. We can make.
You don't have to do it today. You don't have to vote on that. You don't have to make this vote today either on this particular issue because you do have time to think about it. You still have time before your October tenth meeting because you're going to accept your budget as a whole number.
Okay.
So if it's something that you want to hold off and discuss, I mean, you've got a budget and finance subcommittee meeting coming up too. It can be discussed there as well.
Because personally, I'd rather have more information to make a decision off of than us being.
I agree.
Gun ho and then being like, oh.
I want to see the contract.
Guess what made the radio?
I'm assuming that the contract was for this year and so they sign them yearly. If it's not in the budget, they can't technically spend what they wouldn't have going forward.
Well, and it, it may be more complicated than that because I imagine this, that economic development was created by an interlocal agreement. So we don't just have a, an obligation to them, but we also have an obligation possibly to the other units of local government, so.
I think we need to see that contract.
All right.
Okay, for clarification, are we saying that we typically pay them the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in January for that current year?
Yes, that's how it's been in the past.
It started.
It started in 2023.
Well, but I mean, if they've received twenty-four, we're going to have to do something for the year twenty-five.
Right.
And if they have, their contracts exceed what we're doing, it, it doesn't look well for us.
Right.
That's all, yeah.
We're on the same page.
Yeah.
Yep, let's find out there.
Yeah, because they're, they're fully funded up until this year and then in January, they get the new check going forward. That's what, yeah.
All right, moving on. What else, what else are we looking at, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, nothing on page two and I actually have nothing on page three to, to jump ahead.
Anybody on page two and three? All right, on to four.
That concludes, because there's one line and, and page four, and that concludes the Commissioner's budget.
Okay.
For now. Page five, drainage board.
Anybody with anything on drainage?
Zero.
Zero.
All right.
Again, this is just be going forward. Page six.
Page six.
Fund eleven thirty-eight, Q cap, nothing. This is the explanation of page seven, sorry. Y'all just chime in, right? We can perhaps speed this up a little bit. Page seven is the medical benefit self-insurance. Jim, that's where all the funds are collected and distributed there. Page eight, uh, nothing.
We had some questions.
Question.
And I don't think Billy's here.
No, he's.
And I guess we can maybe contact him. Do we bid out our uniforms and our clothing and do we bid out our furniture? Or is that just like a set contract that we've always had or are we getting bids for that?
Where are we at and are we?
Page nine.
Are we in building maintenance already? Okay.
That was my question. So I can, I can reach out to Billy and ask him. I just haven't had a chance to do that yet.
I had a few reductions there, but yeah.
Read them off.
Good question. Why don't you lead the page nine? How about that?
Yes. I had, I had a three thousand dollar reduction for repair and maintenance supplies from forty-five thousand to forty-two thousand.
Is there objection?
No objection.
Which, which where are you at?
Repair and maintenance supply about middle of the page of page nine.
Three thousand.
It's still getting a two thousand dollar increase over the previous year, this, this year.
And they only use thirty-eight percent.
You're going from forty-five to what?
Forty-two.
Forty-two thousand.
And that's not year to date?
Or not year to date, that was six months. Yeah, six months, sorry. And then I reduced janitorial supplies from twenty thousand to seventeen thousand.
Is there objection?
No objection.
Right.
And then I actually reduced uniform and clothing from eighty-five hundred to eight thousand. But I had a question because if we've got a contractor for bidding that out, I didn't know what that looked like, if that was a set number. It kind of just seemed like it was just a chosen, like a picked number, but I wanted to ask just to see.
Would you repeat technical to eighty-five hundred?
From eighty-five hundred to eight thousand in uniforms and clothing.
Eight hundred.
You want to go ahead?
Eight thousand, sorry.
You want to go ahead with that then, with the reduction?
Yeah, because I can change it back. I need to in October.
Is there objection?
No objection.
All right, hearing none? All right. Does that do it for maintenance?
It is.
All right.
I've got some on page ten, personnel. I do have a question and I should have asked Jennifer this. The unemployment comp, is that for the entire county or her department? Because it's, it's.
No, that's not for, that's for the county. And we don't play, we don't pay out unemployment, like a regular business pays, pays unemployment quarterly or whatever. Because being a government entity, we only pay unemployment out if someone files and receives unemployment. So that's kind of a stab in the dark again on if somebody's actually applying for it. So we're not paying, we don't have a set rate that we're paying in as a government entity.
Okay.
Wow.
Okay.
Okay. Well, that's, I'll just leave it there, but I had a question mark on that one.
Office supplies.
I, I put professional services down to ten. I, I might be wrong on that, but I'm looking at the numbers spent throughout the years and.
Is there?
I got from twelve to ten on professional.
Is there objection on the reduction?
On professional services?
Is there?
She just moved to an electronic, a different electronic for the HR records over the portal that will be a cost to that. That was just an agreement that was approved.
So is that professional services that we covered in her professional service contract?
Okay, so we need to keep it at.
So leave it at twelve?
Okay. I dropped drug testing to twenty-one hundred dollars. It's still a three hundred dollar increase from the previous year. Again, just trying to shave some dollars. Safety committee, it's going up from five hundred to two thousand, but I thought we, we could drop it to fifteen. Jennifer?
Hi.
Can you explain? I'm glad you're here. I'm just looking at some of your numbers and safety committee, you've got a, a, a five hundred dollar budget this year. Nothing spent the first six months, but it's a two thousand dollar request. Can you help me out on that one?
The safety committee, the AEDs in the building come out of the safety committee budget, the batteries for it, which for whatever reason comes out of the HR budget. So that's what that's there for.
So don't touch it?
Not the five hundred.
Uh, no, the two thousand. The safety committee, you have budgeted two thousand. We were going to cut it to fifteen hundred. But if you actually know you need it, then.
I'm just looking at the previous year's spent, zero, zero, thousand ninety, zero the first six months, but maybe you got a cost coming.
No, you can take it. That's done. We're not doing that. You can take it.
Okay.
The whole thing?
If you want to pay for the AEDs, go for it, yeah. Absolutely. Yeah, you can take it out to fifteen hundred.
Yeah, you might as well stay here. I got.
Someone likes to get haircuts.
Everyone gets a haircut.
What, what about the office supply at sixty-five hundred?
I need a new printer.
There you go.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I figured, I just figured without talking to you, that was a wise.
I have the old auditor printer and it is on its last leg, so.
Oh, boy.
Okay. We were going to cut professional services, but Angie tuned us in.
Oh, thank you, because that's when I heard you were talking about it. That's why I walked in.
Were you watching online?
Well, of course.
Well, this is, this is the budget day to watch, absolutely. I, I dropped traveling mileage to seven fifty. I've not seen hardly anything spent there. I also dropped training to seven fifty. Just keep in mind, I'm trying to, trying to shave everyone to get to a number that I think is a good number for the county.
So is there objection to the reductions to seven fifty on those two items?
Are those just for department heads or does that include council and conferences?
That's just mine.
Do you have any training that you need that you foresee?
Um, a lot of my training I'm able to do online, so that's why the travel mileage doesn't use much in the training.
Cobra compliance, I've got a two thousand dollar number. I was going to drop it five hundred. We've never really spent anything on that. We haven't spent anything this year. Can you help me on that one?
The Cobra compliance, I want to say that's wrapped up in our. With I solve. I would leave that one for now.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. There you go. So we're going to leave the twenty-five hundred.
All right, anything?
Those are my thoughts.
Anything else for this department?
Oh, actually, I'm, I'm glad you're here. So you, Jennifer, put together the, the wage sheet. Did you guys all see that? And, and again, help me out. You guys are manually entering these into the, to the computer?
Once we have those adjustments, which will be accepted.
Right.
We will get those adjustments made. So all of the salary, wages, perf and social security will all be adjusted based off of that. So you're going to have some reductions that you don't yet see because we have to go back and take these and work with those numbers now.
The perf and eleven percent and then social security and all that.
Should, should we make just a motion to accept these, not as in final, but for budget, you know, I mean.
You did that at your first meeting and by accepting that, that gave us the ability to now go in and adjust those numbers. Then we can prepare the salary ordinance, so you guys can have, that way we can approve everything at the October meeting. And you will have those number, your budget numbers prior to that. We'll work on those.
Okay, thank you.
And get goings. That way you don't have to worry about them.
All right. That's it.
Hey, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, see you later.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I lost my place.
Oh, yeah.
What next, Mr. Chairman?
We're on what, MVH, Fund eleven seventy-six. I just knocked down wages, part-time clerical from a thousand to five hundred. They've never used any money for that other than in 2021 of a hundred bucks.
All right, is there objection?
Wages, part-time clerical, yeah, sure.
And I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Reduce it to what?
Five hundred.
Thank you.
I would love to, and Jason's not here, computer programming, but you know, this is a fund that we really can't really move money around. So computer programming, it goes up to fifteen thousand. I, I, I don't recall that, that discussion on that.
Did I come from the Q fund last, last time? Did he move something?
For some reason, and I, I'm thinking this had something to do with their fuel system out there. I am not a hundred percent sure on that, but that is what's coming to my mind at this point in time, but that's another one that you guys can. Reach out a little.
I just had a question, I just had a question mark on that, so we'll just leave it if everyone wants to leave it.
Yep. Well, let's get clarification before October.
Our highway, our maintenance is coming in here. Just a few will show up in those questions.
Okay.
I'm just gonna, yeah.
Do you have dues and subscriptions?
Sure, let's cut it.
Three hundred.
To three hundred, let's do it.
All right. Is there objection to reducing dues and subscriptions to three hundred?
It did go from two hundred to four hundred.
Well, that's appropriated. He spent in twenty-one, two hundred, twenty-two, two hundred, zero, zero this year so far. Doesn't mean, he's probably got something they pay two hundred dollars for. The association of rural paving company.
So. I have a question on their cell phone. Sorry, I'm sorry, Jim.
Telephone?
Yeah, our telephone, a part of that seven thousand, do you know if there's cell phones coming out of that?
Yes, there are.
Okay. I'd cut it to sixty-five hundred, but if there's like a contract, then. Can we cut it to sixty-five hundred?
Sure.
Do it.
Okay.
All right. Is there objection to reducing telephone to sixty-five hundred? Hearing none?
Right, and, and just to let people know who may be watching, we're not doing this willy-nilly. We actually have the data in front of us that shows that sixty-five hundred should be ample.
And we've gone over this budget multiple times.
Right, right. They spent in 2023, four thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars. They spent in the first half of the year roughly twenty-two hundred dollars, so, okay.
Before we go on to the next page.
The next page, next page.
Hey, before we do that, can we ask?
Can we jump back to building maintenance?
Yeah, building maintenance, because he's in here and we had a few questions. Can we hop back up the page and then get him back to his work?
Billy.
How you doing? Good morning.
Mrs. Cox did a number on your budget. I want you to know that. No, she didn't.
Just a little bit, just a little.
Over the questions.
My question was, is under uniforms and clothing, do we bid that out? Or do we just have like somebody we've used forever and ever and ever?
Just somebody we've used for, I mean, as long as I've been here, that company's been here, I believe it's just a, we just keep signing continuing contracts.
Something you'd consider doing?
Yeah, I've always, I've, I've actually thought about branching out, see if there are some offers out there maybe cheaper.
Great, you might get more for less.
And pest control.
Pest control was the other one we were wondering.
Pest control, I believe, is just what we've always used at the county, which was Arrow.
Will you consider bidding it out?
I'd consider that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Is that all you needed from me?
Yeah, that was.
Did we want to take, we want to take any actions on those lines then?
I'm like, if we could save money, let's do it.
Oh, I'm with you.
We took action on uniforms.
I did cut your, I did cut your uniform to eight thousand. Is that going to be a problem? Is part of your contract eighty-five hundred is what you had in the budget?
Yeah, because they raised their, their prices, at least this company has raised their price and I added a part-time uniform for.
Okay.
The lady who's here, when she covers, when there's people's gone for, you know, weeks vacation and so I, I did add to my current.
All right, I'll give it back to you.
Okay.
All right, but if you'll, if you'll bid those out for me, I would appreciate it just to see if we can get, you know, if we can cut something, that would be awesome.
Yeah, and I noticed on the, I kind of caught bits on the janitorial part of it, just prices are going up. And so everything I'm getting from these, I use like five or six different people to get supplies. And they're just forecasting with me. They're like, everything's going up, so that's kind of.
Yeah, okay.
Kind of where we're at on that.
If you need more, come back and see us.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Where are we picking up at, Mr. Chairman?
Ladies, did you get that? Uniforms and clothing, give them the five hundred dollars back.
Page eleven.
Are we page twelve or twelve?
Oh, that's right. We were, we just did, we just did eleven.
Thank you, Billy.
I have, I have nothing on this page. I mean, I mean.
Anybody on page twelve?
I had a question on the spray service, but Jason's not here because we had thirty thousand budgeted and we've spent zero the first six months. So like, what is spray service? Are we not using it and we put it back in the budget again? Do you have any insight, Angie?
I believe the spray service is for the weeds.
That's what I thought.
On the side of the highway, a lot of, I, I don't know if they.
I would say no, because there's a lot of not mowing and lots of weeds. I've had lots of complaints.
I, I think that it's a, it's a time of the year that they spray, so that might not reflect in the first half of the year's budget.
I thought they contracted a lot of that out.
I, yeah, that one is, it's somebody that goes out. It's a contract that goes out for that, but I don't know where that's at. That'd be a highway question.
They didn't pay the bill for the year.
Maybe, that's like, she said, maybe it's a.
Or you don't spray, you don't spray in April.
You know?
There's no weeds in April to spray.
Yeah, on the, on the bottom of thirteen.
Question mark there, Tim.
Will, Will's all about the weeds, you know? Honeysuckle, he don't, remember last year, he was all over honeysuckle last year, right? Now he's on the weeds.
We're going to move on to page thirteen.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good. I'm good on thirteen.
Anybody on thirteen?
I was already on thirteen. That's spray service.
Okay, okay. On to fourteen then.
I'm good.
Good, good.
Nothing. Fifteen, nothing. So these are, these are dedicated funds that we really can't do a whole lot with. They have flexibility to transfer, so we have to trust the department head to budget and then transfer if necessary. Yeah, Q bridge, page sixteen, nothing. Local road and street, I have nothing.
That was another question I had for Jason. We had ninety-seven thousand budgeted, we've only, at, at six months, we'd use twenty percent. He's got a hundred and two thousand budgeted for roadside mowing. And I'm telling you, I had a lot of people call and complain because it just seemed like it didn't happen a lot this year. So, and I think that's something that we contract out as well, so what's, what's going on with that contract?
That's true.
At least we haven't paid for it and not have it done.
Well, maybe, yeah, that's true.
See, here, there's another, there's another question, I'm, where's Jason?
All right, seventeen, I, I have nothing. If you guys have something, chime in. Page eighteen. Wages overtime, I'd like to go from one twenty-five to one twenty?
Is there objection to reducing overtime for the Sheriff's Department by five thousand? Without objection?
Okay. I have just something else for the Sheriff's Department, page nineteen, a thousand dollar, I'm sorry, legal services from thousand to five hundred, they've never used it. I presume if they need it, they're gonna have to get an additional anyway, or a transfer.
Can you repeat that, what one was it?
I'm sorry, legal services, page nineteen on my book, one thousand down to five hundred.
Is there objection?
And that's it?
Without objection.
Sorry. That's all I have for the Sheriff's Department. Special Lit, page twenty. I have nothing.
Anybody with anything on the special lit?
Perf, employees' perf, um, that over the years has just dramatically changed. Angie, what is, what can you tell, tell us about that?
Perf is a percentage based on the hour, on your wages. So if they're working more hours, they've increased from thirty-five to forty hours, so that's going to have an increase in perf. If you're working overtime, that's all going to increase your perf, so perf is... Yeah, and, and there were added employees too, that would also increase it. But that is based on, it's a percentage based on the wage and what they've earned.
In twenty-one, it was sixty-one thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars too.
So we've, we've moved a lot of employees off the general fund onto the lit over that period.
Okay, thank you.
And it's, it's at eleven point two percent is what we have to pay as the employer side. And, I mean, there's, there's over two hundred thousand dollars in overtime on there, which, if they use all of that, that's good, times your two point, or eleven point two percent.
Okay.
Do the employees pay the three percent line onto the other fund?
Which one?
Overtime.
On whose, on what page? Oh, where are we at, sorry? I'm listening to both sides.
I have nothing on page twenty, lit.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
So I have a concern that we cut, we changed the hours of the Sheriff's Department last year from thirty-seven and a half to forty hours with the understanding that the overtime was going to be decreased. And it doesn't appear that that has happened. And I'm not sure why, I'm not sure what's going on. I'm told that they're fully staffed, so it's not that, it's a staffing issue. And I'm not sure if we need to cut the overtime. And then if it's needed, they can come back for, Sheriff can come back for an additional appropriation. Is it a lack of just being aware of what's going on? But that's a concern of mine.
Are you on funds or one seven?
Well, it's both. It's, it's under Sheriff's Department, he's got overtime there for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, we just cut it to a hundred and twenty. But then on lit as well, there's wages overtime for two hundred and five thousand.
The, the general fund, just so everyone is aware, is the merit officers, so that's the road officers, patrol. The special lit are your turnkey dispatchers.
Okay.
So the people working in the jail.
It was, it was the merit officers that we adjusted their hours on, right?
Yeah.
No, you adjusted the turnkey dispatchers from a thirty-five hour week to a forty-hour week
Okay.
Out at the jail, so that would have been your increase.
Okay.
So that's, that's where, so we're seeing overall?
Yeah, I mean, at six months, he was at fifty-one point three eight percent for the turnkey dispatchers. So, um, budgeted last year was a hundred ninety-seven, five, five, four. Um, and we, at six months, were at fifty-one point three eight percent spent in overtime. And we went from thirty-five hours to forty hours. Are, are we fully staffed in turnkey dispatch? Are we trying to cover?
So.
I thought, I thought that's what I, Jennifer said.
And that, that fund reduced those hours, it's not time and a half overtime, it was the thirty-five to forty, right?
It, it actually took the hourly, so there's three different hours that the county has. You have the eighteen twenty a year, the nineteen forty-four, and the twenty eighty. So, most of the offices, clerical staff work thirty-five hour week, which is your eighteen twenty. The Sheriff's Department, they were at, I believe, eighteen twenty and moved up to the twenty eighty. So they weren't getting overtime, that was just their regular rate. Now, anything that goes over the forty is time and a half.
Yeah. So I wonder if that's
So would that make the
Time and a half coming over.
Overall number of hours worked has gone up.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
And that, that doesn't make sense.
No.
No.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah.
So do we cut that overtime? It's, he's asking for an increase from one ninety-seven, five, five, four to two hundred and five thousand for overtime. In twenty twenty-one's bet was sixty-one thousand, four twenty-four, twenty twenty-two was seventy-one thousand, three eighty-eight. Twenty twenty-three, a hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Wow.
And eight ninety-one. Twenty twenty-four was appropriated, one ninety-seven, five, five, four, and like I said, at six months, we're at fifty-one point three eight percent. So, and he's projecting, he's asking for two hundred and five thousand for next year. There's a constant increase, and we, last year, to cut that overtime, that was part of the deal, we'll give you from thirty-five to forty. We'll give you forty, it'll make scheduling easier for him. And he said, oh, you'll see a, a cut in my overtime, but that's not what's happened.
Yeah.
Between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-four, there was a significant pay increase, right? So I think that...
Yeah, that's somewhere we're taking account of, there's been wage growth, yeah.
Because if you do have time and a half on a higher scale or something like that, it's gonna jump.
But that's overtime, that's not wages, that's overtime. But yes, if you're paying overtime, yes, because the wages...
It'll, it'll jump a little bit, you know? I mean, if you increase the pay over two years, which they were, twenty-five, well, we're talking, we're talking, we're talking jailers now, right? We're not talking the Sheriff's Department. Yeah, so...
That's true, that's one thing to look at.
They did get the, the twelve percent that everybody got in twenty-two.
The merit officers got a, a sizable bump two years in a row, where the jailers got, and, and everyone, for the most part, got a nice bump once, so...
Well, that's what I'm looking at, from twenty twenty-three versus now, what was spent would be eighteen, nineteen thousand dollar difference from those two periods. But you see the biggest jump between twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, or even twenty twenty-one. Those look like a small percentage of a, a jump up until you get to where those wages go up to. So your time and a half would be costing more. I don't know why it's still there, but...
When council, for twenty twenty-three, in twenty twenty-two, when council did the budget, there was a movement of employees from the general fund to special lit.
Yeah.
So that's why you're gonna see that increase, because for that particular part of it, you had moved several employees out of the general fund and into, because there used to be a general fund jail. And that was where your jailers and turnkey dispatchers and stuff were paid. So that moved it over.
So these numbers aren't necessarily...
That's why you're seeing that significant increase from
Okay.
Twenty, I'm sorry, from twenty-two to twenty-three.
Which was the same thing on the perf.
Yep, which helps, yeah.
So you wanna, you wanna flatline that, or what do you wanna do with that?
I don't know, I'm thinking of just reduce it, and if he goes over, he can come back and ask for an additional appropriation. But that gives some accountability, so that we're aware of what's being done. I'm just talking out loud at this point.
Didn't we take five thousand dollars off of the other overtime wages?
Yeah, but that was your merit officers, this was your turnkey.
Well, not only that, though, your jails were full back then.
Right, in twenty twenty-one, yeah, but your numbers aren't telling the full story, because they were...
We've got less than a hundred and fifty people in there right now, yeah.
I think that's gonna be a...
Change the bailing, so some of you'll have less than that.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna have to have a conversation with the sheriff too about the justification for this, or why he thinks it's gonna be higher.
I had a meeting scheduled yesterday, but I just wasn't able to attend with my dad passing, so...
Well, my, my question is on those. If you bounce off the overtime being paid out versus how many PTO hours are being taken out there? Theoretically, if you have more overtime, you'd have less PTO hours being taken, correct? Has anybody got a chance to take a look at that, or less sick days?
They'd have to come within his department.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's just a question to kind of bounce back.
Oh, I know, I agree with you.
Yeah.
So we need some more clarification on that, Pam.
Well, if you sat down and looked at the number of people that are employed there and projected out for the next year where you think it would be, based upon what the forty was, then you would, I know that overtime's gonna be anybody's question, what that's gonna be.
Right, right.
But you think it's gonna be less with people working more hours.
And I will say there are part-time that can fill in as well, out there, they do have several part-time turnkey dispatchers.
So would we, would we, would we want to give him the same next year as we budgeted for this year? And, and then just making the adjustments going forward, is we need to just flatline him from twenty-four to twenty-five? It wouldn't be a huge decrease, but it would take out whatever...
If you took it down to two hundred.
I think you need to follow up with that conversation though, and figure out.
Right.
Because maybe, maybe this is justified, maybe there's something else going on, I don't, I don't know, so...
But when you're only talking five thousand dollars, the additional appropriation could come.
I think going forward too, if, you know, we're looking at it, it could be a system question.
All right, anybody, we, uh, we wanna take action on this, or?
Let's move it to two hundred thousand.
Is there objection?
And five off.
All right, without objection?
So reducing overtime two hundred to two hundred thousand?
Right.
All right, where are we at, Mr. Chairman?
Nothing else on page twenty. Page twenty-one. With the prison population actually going down.
Right.
I, I've got prisoner meals down to four hundred thousand. It's still a seventy thousand dollar increase from last, from this year. However, he's gonna be a little over budget, perhaps
Cost of food's been up.
This year, what's that?
Cost of food has gone up drastically.
Tell me about it.
Family and sex, woof, da.
So what do you, you guys got a number?
You could do four hundred, I think.
I'm okay with that, I'm okay with four hundred.
You're okay with that?
Is there objection?
Make sure people have it.
Without objection?
Again, uniforms and clothing, I got it down to eighteen thousand.
Well, I, I wasn't sure why that went from zero, zero, was that out of a different fund before?
Different fund.
All right.
Again, do they bid that out?
So the chairman wants to reduce, uh, uniforms and clothing to eighteen thousand even?
Yep.
Is there objection? Hearing none?
I, I can't remember if there's professional services of twenty-five needed for the computers or stuff out there, but we've not spent near twenty-five thousand in the past, so I had actually reduced it to twenty, but I...
All right, is there objection? Without objection? It was, uh, professional services.
Services to twenty thousand. Um, hold on a second. Help me out here, last special meeting, we told him to go ahead and go forward with something in his budget for, and I just can't remember if that's...
Central Square, he said he had it budgeted this year, it was an additional twenty, five thousand dollars. And then moving forward, I think that's under your equipment maintenance contract. In twenty, he's going to upgrade it this year, but by the time they get there, I believe the increase in the annual maintenance fee will not take effect until twenty twenty-six, if I'm remembering correctly.
I think you're right.
Right.
So this line item won't affect, okay, gotcha.
Because that's the equipment, equipment maintenance contract, that's a hundred eighty-five thousand.
Okay.
Professional services from twenty-five thousand to twenty, twenty thousand.
I was gonna do something on prisoner care of twenty, but it's kinda arbitrary, from four hundred thousand to three ninety?
I have three eighty.
Three eighty?
Three eighty.
Which line are you on?
Prisoner care.
Reduction of prisoner care from four hundred thousand to three hundred and eighty thousand, is there objection?
You want eighty or you want ninety?
Eighty.
Okay.
Three hundred and eighty. Hearing no objection.
That still represents a twenty-five thousand, I'm sorry, a thirty thousand dollar increase over this year. Office furniture, I don't know, I just cut it from ten to five. It's probably just arbitrary.
Hold on, all right. Office furniture from ten to five, is there objection? Hearing done?
And that's, that's, that's it, go ahead.
No, you're fine. What on page?
Page twenty-two, I have nothing. Page twenty-three, I have nothing. Twenty-four. Twenty-five. Twenty-six, nothing, unless you guys have stuff.
No.
And we did go through these page by page, line by line, so the fact that we have nothing doesn't mean we haven't seen them. Yeah, I didn't do anything with statewide nine-one-one. So page twenty-seven, nothing. Central dispatch, page twenty-eight, nothing. Nothing for K-nine, page twenty-nine. I only have a question on Dare, page thirty. I know in the years past, we talked about maybe revenues not matching expense requests, madam auditor. What do you think about this one? I, I'm just throwing a curveball to you.
Yeah, Dare, they've not really historically spent all of that, they've eaten into the cash balance some on there, but I don't know what all he has.
And it's just like the tourism board, right? You can't spend what you don't have, so, so I'm just gonna not do anything with it, that's mine. Okay. Page thirty-one. Nothing. Thirty-two, thirty-three. Nothing. Moving on to the clerk, page thirty-four. I have nothing. Again, last year, we, we put the knife to this pretty good, so it kinda reflects this year. Page thirty-five, voter registration, a reasonable increase, I would think, but for, oh, we're doing a, a reclassification. Okay, that's the reason for that, a job reclassification, so I have nothing. Election board, I have nothing. Page thirty-six, does anybody have anything? Okay. Thirty-seven, nothing. I might just go through, hold on, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, I have nothing. And I had a note. Uh, hold on a second, I need to go back.
That's not allowed.
No, 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 I, I, it's, I just remember these stipends, okay. Sometimes the bilingual stipend. Okay.
I don't think we've covered it.
Yeah, I need to, I'm sorry, madam auditor, I need to go back to page thirty-four. I think we said in our budget meeting, we would roughly increase the stipend from twenty-one hundred to twenty-two hundred. Oh, Jenny doesn't have anything budgeted for that.
Had a bilingual stipend last, this year, she's removed it for next year, so there is no bilingual stipend requested for twenty-five.
Right, right. Sorry, so then, let me get back to where I was.
Yeah, and the one department, I think it went from two thousand to twenty-one hundred, because one department only had two thousand for their bilingual stipend, and everyone else had twenty-one hundred.
Okay.
Is the discussion I recall, but if you're...
That was, that was last year, you're talking, at the budget?
This year, we had one, one department that requested a bilingual stipend that was two thousand, and everyone else was twenty-one hundred.
Okay.
And I think that was the conversation, or that was, I guess the conversation I was thinking about, was moving that from two thousand to twenty-one hundred and keeping them all
Okay.
That were their uniform.
Okay.
You said two thousand to twenty-one hundred?
Yeah, and that was, and I, I cannot remember which department off there, but...
Is that what we said in our...
I thought we talked about
We did.
This year going from twenty-one to twenty-two, but you guys consider it as we go through them?
I want it across the board, I want it the same across the board.
I don't think we've gotten to any of the departments that have it, usually those are in the, the courts.
If you want all of the bilingual stipends that are requested to be twenty-two hundred, we can adjust that to all, make them uniform, so all of the stipends are the same.
It's currently two thousand, right?
Twenty-one.
It's currently twenty-one hundred, yeah, so then that would be the move we would probably want to do.
But there was one and a half department that I'm, no, that was different.
That was a different...
I'm okay with that.
These were just like the bilingual stipends. There are some statutory stipends that we have to pay based off statute, but the bilingual is not, so that would be, you could, if you want to increase it to twenty-two, we can do that across the board for all bilingual stipends.
Is that, is that the rule of the council?
Yes.
Is there objection? All right, so ordered.
So across the board, twenty-two?
Thank you, Angie.
You're welcome.
Uh, I forget where we're at now. Let me go back to page.
Page forty or forty-one?
Okay.
Nothing.
Hold on a second. Okay, we did adjust it, two thousand on wage along with, okay? Sorry?
Forty, forty?
I have nothing on forty.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Literally on the same page. Forty-one, nothing. Forty-two, nothing. Forty-three.
Nothing.
Nothing.
I had nothing.
Nothing. Maybe you should go to the pages, we have something. So forty-five, I have nothing. Oh, finally a page with something.
Are you on forty-five?
Uh, forty-five, yeah.
I just had a question on contractual services for twenty-five thousand, so I don't know if you have, have a.
Which page are you on?
Uh, forty-five, which is corner perpetuation, but I don't think we have much control over that, do we?
Mr. Grolick?
No, this is the surveyor's.
Oh wait, the surveyor, sorry, I just blazed this off.
It looks like corner.
This can only be used for section corner, and they have Aben Marsh, which comes out, I believe that's who the company is. A company that comes out and does their section corners, that's what that twenty-five thousand is, so, yep.
Thank you.
But if we had a surveyor, corner perpetuation, right?
The coroner's best.
And I'm, I'm looking, it says coroner right in front of me, so.
Page forty-six.
Okay, uh, little slight haircut for Mr. Grolick in vehicle maintenance supplies from sixteen down to fifteen, still an increase of a hundred bucks. Vehicle maintenance supplies from sixteen hundred to fifteen hundred, and furniture repair from five hundred to three hundred. And that's all I have. Forty-seven, I have nothing. Forty-eight, I have nothing.
I have a question.
Yes, um.
L E C P.
Yes, um.
John, can you explain what's happening with the L E C P? I know that Deb and I met with you, uh, I don't remember when, and you had talked about needing to get more people to fill that board so that we could receive that grant money. Can you give us an update on what's going on there?
There really hasn't been a lot of interest in filling those slots.
John, you need to come up for the live stream.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There's not been a lot of interest in filling all those slots.
Okay.
And as long as we don't fill those slots, uh, we don't have a majority, so it doesn't constitute a meeting. And the people that show up are wasting their time because we don't meet the criteria for the state.
What was the dollar amount of the grant? Was it seventy-five hundred? Do you remember?
Well, it, it depends upon the amount of money that each, um, reporting agency contributes. So it could conceivably vary, uh, from year to year. For example, we had, uh, oh, I don't recall a company that, that closed, so their contribution to the state would be decreased. But anywhere from six to seven thousand dollars a year we would get for training, yes.
All right, and, and you oversee these funds and that responsibility as a part of your job responsibilities as coroner, or?
No, not all.
Okay.
Uh, it, it just, I guess it fell by default because the, um, L E P C chair died, Mr. Gray, and I was the vice chair.
Okay.
Okay.
So that, that, that board selects its own president?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So how many people do you need on there to be able to make it a?
I think thirteen.
Thirteen?
There are several disciplines spelled out by federal law that, that have to be on that board.
Okay, I'm just talking out loud, cause I have no idea if this would work or not, but is that something where you could cross over with those who sit on the EMA board and the L E C P? Could you do like, if they show up for an EMA meeting, could we then just roll right into an L E C P meeting? Yes, absolutely, Jack, you probably have that answer.
We used to, we used to have those meetings that way.
Okay.
Uh, and for whatever reason, they changed.
Okay.
And I really don't know why. I actually said something to Jack about, uh, taking that position as chair.
I don't need to put you on the spot, John, I'm just looking at money that we're like leaving on the table, and it's like we can find a way to get that money, cause training is huge for our departments.
You know, they, the frustrating thing for me is that, um, oh, two or three months ago, we had a hazardous material event training at, uh, Seasons Banquet Center. And, uh, the location that, that was in, actually that jurisdiction wasn't even there, so, um.
We had one fire department represented.
Frustrating, uh, that the local jurisdictions don't think it's important enough to participate. I, uh, I quite frankly insult them. I have no problem, I, I chew them out. Uh, and it, sometimes it just falls to deaf ear.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, um, the, the frustrating thing for me is that I foresee the opportunity for training, I foresee the possibility of a significant event at some point in time.
Right.
And, uh, our goal is to be prepared for that.
Yeah.
And, uh.
I feel your frustration. Thank you for what you're doing.
It, it's frustrating for me, but I, I don't know how to be their mommy and daddy all the time.
Yep, yep.
So about stacking kind of the EMA advisory board and that, you can do that to some extent, but by statute, people on the advisory board usually represent, like every town is represented on that board, and so they aren't representing those ESF functions that are required for the L E P C. You have to have a certain person from healthcare, you have to have a certain person from fire, a certain person from manufacturing, I, I don't know what the whole list is, but there has to be certain positions filled there. So you might get a little overlap, and this might be different from how the board, EMA board was structured in the past. Maybe there were different people on there that could fill that.
Okay.
But in where we're at now.
It won't work.
It won't work.
Okay.
I'm sorry, repeat quarter, is it quarterly meetings are required, or how often, once a year?
Four meetings a year.
For L E C P or for EMA, for E, L E C P is four meetings a year?
Oh, I P C's four, yeah. I, I, I've tried to schedule six.
Vote for a quorum.
That way if folks don't show up, we still meet the, the criteria, but.
It's a, it's a lot of people to spend their time if, you know, if it's.
People are meeting now, yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, John.
All right, no, thank you. Thanks for your interest.
Real quick, is, is there a minimum requirement of trainings required by Indiana Department of Homeland? Or through EMA itself that require participation from all the different towns in those county trainings?
No, so this, any training put on by the L E P C is going to be above and beyond, like, a firefighter still has to go through all the required training to become a firefighter, but this is more like specific instances, we're gonna simulate the scenario happens and this is what we're gonna do. It's, it's a little above and beyond.
Well, my question was, does the state require us to hold that or mandate us to do those? And the reason?
OSHA requires, uh, at least a, uh, an exercise involving extremely hazardous substance annually.
Okay. And this might be an unpopular opinion.
Solar.
And not quite the place to bring it up outside of a regular meeting, but we're talking about five hundred thousand dollars into a pot going to public safety.
Yeah.
Might be an eligibility requirement mandated in there to be a part of that.
Were you listening to what I just whispered to the, to the chairman?
I had no idea what you said, man.
I just said the same thing.
I'll, I'll say it out loud, I mean.
If you want the public safety dollars, you need to attend the trainings.
Or, and so we're wanting to a training.
Right. Is it just one a year? Is that, is that what you do? You put on one annual training a year for the L E C P?
Yes.
Okay. And with solar and battery down the road, would that be something that you would specifically train on?
Uh, battery, probably. Uh, solar, I don't know that that meets any standards for, uh, extremely hazardous substances, but obviously solar, uh, battery may.
I know Casillas County is bringing in, or they're hoping to get money to bring in someone to do a training on battery storage there.
Good.
Very good, okay.
Can we attend those meetings? I said, can we attend those meetings?
Well, that's what I'm gonna ask. I got a meeting with them next week, so I'm gonna ask.
Please share that information.
Yep. I, I think it's more like actual exercise, it's not.
Gotcha.
Like it's gonna be with the fire folks.
Right, which is necessary.
Other public safety, but.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys.
I guess while I'm here, I'll just share with you, uh, I've, I've been communicating with, uh, Mr. Klotz. The motor in my vehicle froze up the other day, so.
Oh, boy.
I'm communicating with him on.
I, I think he's, he's planning on transferring some money within the commissioner's budget to, to get that repaired for you, so.
Do you have more than one vehicle?
I do.
Okay, I thought you did, but.
I do.
So which one seized up the van?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Which one seized up the van?
No, thank God. The, the Durango, that's a two thousand seventeen. Unfortunately, it's got a, a new trend motor, and, uh, they're very pricey to, to replace them. So. May actually even consider a, a used vehicle versus a new one. But sometimes you could buy new as.
Cheap as you can buy.
With a government discount, as cheap as you can buy a used one, so.
All right. Well, thank you guys, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your interest.
I keep flipping the pages here. Hold on a second, Ellie. Sandy, I see you in the back there. Just to let you know, museum is nothing, so. Nothing, nothing changes for you. I'm just giving you advance notice in case you wanna.
We will, I will say that we, um, are gonna vote to give you a two hundred and fifty dollar above the eighteen hundred to keep you as a non, is, I get exempt and non-exempt separate. It would be an exempt. To keep you exempt as a salary to play.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, let me get back to.
Reaching states.
What page was that?
I didn't mean to skip, but I saw someone back there.
You have nothing for the historical society, too, I assume?
I don't believe so. I'm sorry, Sandy, I forgot about historical, but.
Let me look at the page number.
I don't mean to jump around.
That's totally fine.
Well, come on up, come on up real quick, I'm starting.
Reading away back there on committee stuff, so not a problem. But I appreciate you bumping me up.
Where's museum?
Museum, page seventy-four, historical society, seventy-five.
Uh, we are jumping.
I have, yeah, correct, there's nothing on either one, so.
Does anyone else have anything on those two?
Uh, just congratulations on your award again.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it, and I thank you for all the nice comments we got back to. We're really excited. When we know when they're coming to do the presentation, we will let you guys know if any of you can attend. That would be awesome.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Congrats. You made history.
Yes. That's what we keep saying our tagline should be. Together, we're making history, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, yeah.
Well, good luck with the rest of your numbers.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
Okay, let me get back to where we were.
Oh, you have fifty-three?
We're on seventy, or forty-seven, or forty-nine, sorry, forty-nine.
I just jumped ahead, cause I had that one.
I know, I had nothing, you too.
Hey, this is the way I roll sometimes. Okay, um, again, L E P C, okay, assessor, page forty-nine. So we did nothing on L E P C forty-eight. Assessor, page forty-nine, I have nothing. Page fifty, disclosure, sales disclosure, nothing. Reassessment, page fifty-one. I have nothing. Fifty-two, reassessment, I have nothing. Anyone, anyone, Bueller?
Nope.
Okay, page fifty-three, prosecutors, uh.
Mr. Hummer, real quick.
Sir?
I noticed that Judge Sarber's here. Are we planning on looking at his budget today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we want to jump ahead? Is that what you're asking?
No. Are you in a hurry, Judge, or you need a, do you have a time constraint?
Not anymore. I had a hearing to attend to, I ran back, ran back a year or so, I'm at your meeting.
Okay.
If you refer to do it now, I will.
We can, yeah, we can. I don't think there's anything.
What's that?
I don't think there's anything.
Yeah, we can.
I can't hear you.
I don't think there's anything.
Okay.
I don't think I have anything.
Okay.
Well, there's something, but, uh, let's, we, let's go through this, let's go through this real quick.
All right, we're on the prosecutor, page fifty-three.
Prosecutor fifty-three, I have nothing, and it's the entire budget prosecutor, nothing.
Me neither.
Let me skip through some pages. Handouts. I love the colored graphs. Pre-trial diversion, page, uh.
Sixty-two.
Yeah.
Sixty-two?
Sixty-two, sixty-two, nothing. Page sixty-three, pre-trial diversion, nothing. Drug task force, sixty-four, nothing. Prosecutor, I V D, nothing.
Wait, I had a question on that one.
Question.
I think it might just be a typo. A twenty-twenty-four appropriated for wages deputy prosecutor was twenty-nine thousand, and the request is twenty-nine hundred. Are we missing a zero, or is that correct?
Well, that's a good catch.
Yeah, we did have that question there.
Yep.
Well, you just blew up in the budget, you know?
I did, I know.
Gotta get cut.
Yeah, we had that, we marked that.
Your haircuts.
Yeah, it's an orange.
Just added twenty-seven thousand dollars.
We're gonna have to do it as an additional at this point, because it's already been advertised that way.
Okay.
And those hours are based on the child support, that's all incentive money that comes back, so it's based on the actual hours that they worked, so.
I didn't know if that was just a, if that was what they wanted it to be, or.
Uh, it may be, it may be a typo, I'd have to go back and look, but it would have to be an additional appropriation at this point, because we've advertised at this.
Right.
Perfect, thank you.
We all caught that.
Wow, okay. So we're gonna.
Yeah.
It's good.
Extension. Well, you know, everyone gets a haircut, right? I've got one. It's a big one. It's, it's professional services, uh, to twenty-five hundred instead of twenty-seven. I'm trying, I'm, I'm just trying to shave some dollars here.
We have travel and mileage from seven thousand to six thousand.
I did. Travel and mileage from seven to six.
Professional improvement from three thousand to a thousand.
Hold on real quick. Are you, are you following over there, Tori?
While I'm making notes, and I'm going to go back in.
Perfect, okay.
You said travel and mileage to six thousand?
Yes, that's what I had.
And professional improvement, you said minus a thousand?
Two.
Uh, from three thousand to one thousand.
No, okay, so reducing by two.
All right, is there objection?
Nope.
So ordered?
Can I make just a few comments on that? So the reason we increased professional improvement in mileage is we are now fully staffed with newer educators. Uh, and if we were to send them to a national conference to learn more about what's going on at the national level and those kinds of things, those conferences are about fifteen to sixteen hundred dollars each. Uh, that's the reason we've increased that, was to be able to send our newer educators to get up to speed and learn more things that are going on the national level, so.
Does Purdue, does Purdue offer any kind of, uh, professional services within the educator's budget?
So, uh, Purdue does give them some funds. Typically, it's three to five hundred dollars. But with those national conferences like this year, uh, it's in Idaho, so we're looking at about a two thousand dollar total expense to go to Idaho by the time you fly out there, pay for the expenses, so it gets, it gets pretty pricey. And that's why we want to make sure, you know, our staff here is trained. Purdue does help contribute to that. We do local trainings and state trainings as well, but giving our newer staff the opportunity, uh, to go there, that does help.
So you're just planning on two going or all three?
Uh, so the goal would be at least two to go. Ideally, if all three could go, that would be great. Uh, it just depends on when those conferences fall during the year and programming that they're doing. So, uh, three thousand gives them a thousand each, uh, to be able to do that to help offset their costs.
We have a contract with extension, correct?
We do.
We do.
Okay, so is that, I don't know how that compares to what? Okay, so is that, I don't know how that compares to what?
This is above and beyond.
So this is above and beyond.
They could come down for additional if needed.
That's true. Would you be comfortable coming back for an additional if needed? If you find that they're gonna be able to go, if you have one going or three going, you can come back for an additional appropriation?
Yep.
Okay.
So, what is the will of, uh, you folks? Keep it or just, uh, add it back?
Keep it. They can come back for an additional appropriation if they're able to do their training. We can then add...
Do the additional.
Uh-huh. Keep it a service.
Okay. The answer is, we would, we would give you the money in an additional if, obviously, you needed it. That's what the consensus is amongst the members, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you, you also can transfer if you have the ability to transfer monies, too, so...
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Service officer, um, maybe, maybe this is one in personnel that you guys could take up, but, uh, there's a lot of overtime being incurred in the service officer. I, I'm not inclined to do anything with the budget, but you may wanna consider looking at that position and doing something a little differently with the, with the classification or something. I'm just throwing it out there.
But you also see what was spent in 23.
I'm sorry?
You saw what was spent in 23 and then the bottom line for what's requested.
Right.
Even in, in 25, and then...
Right.
That's a non-exempt position.
She keeps a pretty tight ship there.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there.
She's not classified as exempt. That's why she, she is salaried, but she is able to earn the overtime, which is why it reflects it as it does.
And she's so good, other people come to her, so...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll leave that alone for now.
Okay. So nothing on page 67. Plan commission, um...
So we've got that reduction there that we moved down to, uh...
Well, the only reduction is from 100,000...
To zero.
To zero, because you're...
They're gonna need something on that professional services line, even if it's $5,000 or something, right?
Well, they've had nothing before.
There's nothing there.
They've had nothing, oh.
Someplace else.
Okay. So...
So, to be clear, it's for the comprehensive plan. The request was for 35,000. So instead of that being in the plan commission's budget, it'll be in the commissioner's budget.
Okay. And they, yeah, they don't have any other use for professional services, so, okay.
So, yeah, you're just adding the 35 on the other side, and then this goes from 100 to 0, correct?
So, 100,000 to 0, nothing else. Uh, BZA on page 70, nothing. Couple on the building commission, slight training from 2,000 to 1,500. Office equipment from 800 to 500. Page 71.
Any, any objections on those? Okay.
Unsafe Building, 72, nothing. Uh, Information Systems, 106, I'm sorry, Department 106. Page 73, nothing. Museum and Historical Society, nothing, as previously mentioned. Superior 1. Like I said, everyone gets a haircut. So, uh, wages clerical from 3,000 to 2,000.
Is there objection?
Yeah. Where's that at? I didn't have that.
First...
Three to two, top line.
Okay.
Everybody all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing else, Superior...
Did you do anything with equipment maintenance contracts?
Yeah.
I don't know if they've got something. They, it was budgeted for 4,000.
Yeah.
Six months, was .88 percent. Have, has anybody talked to her?
I missed, I missed the opportunity to ask her on that, so...
We bumped it to seven. You don't have to. I don't know if there's a reason why it's doubling.
I just remembered when talking with the judges that they're doing a lot of their own...
Okay.
Maintenance work themselves.
Okay.
So they don't wear a black robe. They wear other...
Hammer.
They wear, they wear a blue collar sometimes, don't they, Judge? So...
Okay.
So I'm gonna keep it at eight, if you don't mind. Uh, Superior 1, page 77, nothing. Superior 2, um, some discussions here I'd like to keep ongoing, but wages law clerk from 5,000 down to 1,000.
Is there objection?
Is that part-time clerk? Is that what you're talking about?
Wages law clerk, part-time, 5,000 to 1,000.
All right.
Bilingual stipend, 5,000 to 4,400, reflecting the increase from 2,100 to 2,200. Office supplies, 7,000 to 6,500. Jury supplies.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'm just prepared as you are, so... All right, so you had office supplies to 6,500?
Correct. Jury supplies from 1,000 to 800. I know, it's just, it's, it's somewhat arbitrary, but, uh... Jury wheels from 2,000 to 1,500.
Okay.
Travel and mileage, 5,000 to 3,500.
What'd you say, 3,500?
3,500, yep.
And a whopping... And actually, I think I'm just gonna leave it there.
Anybody else on, uh, Superior Court 2? And we're gonna do Superior Court 3 here, and then we're gonna take a break, I think.
Judge, I should've told you nothing in 3, but why don't you come on up?
I said, I have nothing. He goes, oh, no, we got something.
Why don't you come up?
Your budget is amazing. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I, I was...
I know.
I was actually thinking, too, but you're right.
I know, I know.
Uh, well, first off, thank you, Ms. President, for, uh, the dispensation of coming early, and then we got back in line. Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Counselwoman, for, uh, that comment. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, as always, and I will note that, uh, met with Mr. Harmon previously to talk about, uh, kinda the courts and also Superior Court Number 3, so...
Matt, I, I was gonna text or call you before, uh... Contractual services going from 4,700 to 20,000. Is that, is that the IT stuff that we had talked about, or is that the, I can't recall what that's for?
It is not, and I had, uh, small discussions with Ms. Cox about this.
Right.
So, uh, I had a discussion about cloud-based record backup.
Right.
And that is what it is for. Cloud-based record backup, that's remotely accessible as well, and in addition to that, within the 20,000 figure, is a records request management for all of the courts, for circuits, tier ones, tier twos, tier three. The reason for that is they don't allow you to just pick one court if you're going on this record management. What that system is, is if you have a past hearing and a litigant attorney, common person wants to see or hear that hearing, they can go online, request that hearing, assuming it's not privileged or confidential. They can then pay a small fee to then basically have it processed and then delivered in their email, and so they don't have to pay for a transcript, which is quite burdensome. And so if you know about a hearing date that you missed, or you wanna know what happened, you can order it that way. So that's what, it's backup, but it's also, uh, kind of increasing our relationship with the public. Elcart has the records management request system, uh, so I'm happy to show anything that, uh, they have, but I did share the details, and it was attached to the budget as well, of kind of what that was for.
So are the other courts okay with moving forward, too?
Um...
All in one?
The cloud-based management is only for Superior 3, and so I can't speak for all of them. And I also can't speak for whether they will formally go on that system. I just, they, the, the company would not allow me to only pay for Superior 3. It's the same price, whether it's one court or whether it's four, and so I'm working with Circuit Court, Superior 1, Superior 2. Obviously, there's some new judicial officers rolling on, and so my plan is to speak with each of them. I've already spoke to, um, Judge Sorese in Circuit Court, plan to speak to Superior 2 and Superior 1 about having this for all of the county.
So if they move forward, it wouldn't be an additional expense?
It would not. No, there'd be no additional for the other courts.
Perfect. Cool.
All right. I told you we had something for you.
Are you gonna say it? You cut it now?
What's on your leaves? I tease it.
All right.
I did bring snacks back there, so I'm ready to sit if I need to.
Anything else for the judge?
Oh, no.
Thank you.
Congratulations for soon to be the senior judge at a very young age, right?
Um, I won't say how young, but, uh, the longest tenured, yes, yes.
All right.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Well, and I, I will say I, uh, got a text message, uh, a few minutes ago. I believe the governor's appointed Matt Aldridge to be the, uh, judge in Superior 2, so...
That is, that is correct. He was, he was named or called, uh, and it's his news to share, but he was called yesterday afternoon and asked to keep it quiet, and then the press release went out this morning.
Oh, the press release went out this morning.
So we, we were aware. I wasn't sure exactly when the press release is going out, but yes, that was just recent, um, and obviously, we're all congratulatory to Mr. Aldridge.
Yeah.
Yep.
A great addition.
That is awesome. All right.
So you're not the insider that, that you're...
All right. Well, I'm going to, uh, recommend that, uh, at this point, if we were close to finishing, I would say, let's press through and finish, but, uh, I think we should take a lunch break.
I, I can, I can do this, 'cause we have to come back. The Health Department budget's up next.
I'm gonna need to take a break of some sort.
Okay.
Yeah. Ten-minute break?
Sure, whatever you guys need.
I'd like, I'd like to let the staff take their lunch.
Well, whatever you feel like.
That's up to you guys. Honestly, at this point, we'll probably be here the rest of the day and not leave to get through work that's sitting at our desks.
Okay.
So if you wanna plow through it, uh, I would be fine with that. If you wanna take like a 10-minute break, that's fine, but...
If anyone needs to use the restroom, let's do it.
All right, let's, all right, let's take 10, then.
Okay, let's do it.
Was that a clear, right? Do we need a bottle of coffee? Do we need a coffee anywhere? You got the book?
We are back in session. Mr. Chairman, where are we on the budget?
We just got done with Superior Three, right? In Drug Court, page eighty-two, Drug Court, I have nothing. Community Corrections, Project Income.
That's a grant.
What's that?
I was told that's a grant, so...
Yeah, I don't have anything there. So I just want to make sure... Okay, never mind, never mind. The following pages, eighty-three, again, Community Corrections, odd, I don't know what that means.
Those are odd year and even year.
Odd years, that's right, that's right. Nothing. Page eighty-four, Prosecutors' Diversion, nothing. Drug Court, Community Corrections.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-five, nothing.
You've got stuff on eighty-six?
No, he's reading the wrong page. I'm sorry.
Oh, you know what? Was I reading?
Eighty-six, eighty-seven, nothing.
So I'm sorry. I was, I may have put the handwritten sheet. I may have inserted it in the wrong spot.
Oh, gotcha.
So I'm sorry about that. So either way, it's nothing. Okay. And I think I did that with the Health Department when we get down there. So again, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, nothing. McDapp, nothing. Page eighty-eight, page eighty-nine, Transition, nothing. Circuit Court, everyone gets a haircut. I don't know, dues and, here's a whopper. So her bilingual bailiff needs to go up from twenty-one hundred to twenty-two hundred, so they got a little hair extension. And dues and subscriptions, we're gonna, we're gonna cut the new judge from a thousand to six hundred. How about that?
Is there objection? Hearing done?
On which one? Which line?
Third from bottom, or fourth.
Thank you.
So dues and subscription from a thousand to six hundred. Did we add back the CASA grant? Did we add that eleven thousand? We did, it's in there. That's all I have for the new judge.
So I think, I think what you're saying, Tim, is that CASA is fully funded for next year, is that what you're saying?
It'll always be fully funded.
I want to just add to CASA real quick, because I had a conversation with Judge Sarisi. Because it is in her budget and she's overseeing it, there's actually some grants out there that are, that are, that she's going to apply for. She unfortunately, Governor Holcomb had not appointed her yet, so she missed the deadline for one of the grants, but she has dug in and found, I know, one, possibly two or three different grants that she thinks would be applicable for CASA, and she's planning to apply for them as they're available, so...
Okay, and one other thing, and I thank you for that. I spoke to her recently about pauper council, and so with increased activity in drug enforcement comes more chin's cases, child's needed services, and that tends to increase the public defender or pauper council quite a bit, so she's gonna be real close this year to making budget. She may need an additional. Even next year, we gotta keep an eye on it, so we'll obviously give them the resources they need, but it's something we need to keep an eye on, and again, that's why we like to move some money around or cut some money, because we know in the future we'll have some additionals. Having said that, moving on to page ninety-two, CASA, nothing. Ninety-three, CASA, nothing, no cuts. Probation. Jim, can you come up here for a sec? We had a discussion in our budget meeting about using your user fees, and we appreciate your willingness to be a good sport about that. I'll just make a brief...
Hey, if the budget's low this year, I'm a good sport with everything.
Wait, name, rank, social security number, driver's license? Jim Bendy. Jim, real quick, you know it's our intention to support you, but we always like to use the funds that are available elsewhere first, and so we had talked about using your user fees, which had still a pretty good balance, and my commitment to you would be, obviously, if the user fees got to a level where you need help additionally, that I would support it, because I believe, obviously, probation is a needed department, but you're so great at the grants and the user fees, and we appreciate that, so that's why I wanted you to just come up, and we're probably gonna move some numbers around here, but don't think it's not a sign of support or lack of support, we absolutely will support you. Okay, so, so the user fees, remember, we had talked about, I think you have in some of your wages, you wanted to use general fund money. We obviously would like to dip in the user fees, and again, my commitment is to obviously pay you guys, and how do you feel about that?
I know there's been attempts to empty that account out for years, but as long as we're funded beyond that, that's, that's the important thing, is that the department is running really well the way that it is right now with the personnel that we have, and I was just speaking with Judge Sarver back there, that this, if this can get done, we're probably set for the next ten years, as far as personnel goes.
Wow.
And if we can, if there's some way that we can do that, get from, out from underneath the grant, if it's offered, then we control those personnel. We don't have public defender fees that we're gonna have to pay for. We know we have a shortage of attorneys, we have a shortage of, right now, we have a shortage of prosecutors, so cases don't move that fast, and as far as pretrial goes, you're gonna be dedicated to have a court hearing the next day that somebody gets arrested if this grant is going to be, continue to be granted. In fact, we're probably, if we get it, we're probably in our last year of it anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know Porter County had to forego getting it and went their own direction, because it's gonna cost you department head for a pretrial department, it's gonna cost you personnel under that person, and it's gonna cost you public defender fees. So that, in the long term, I think, if you can allow the courts to incorporate it under how we're doing it now, I think that's a way to continue on and be set for the years to come, and I think Judge Sar will concur with me if he's still back there.
Okay. Well, again, that's my commitment, that you'll be fully funded, just always a determination of where you get the money, and so I just want to make sure that you are confident you're, you're not gonna get any distress over this, so...
We try to be.
Okay, okay.
There's public safety concern, and we've got to make sure that we've not only are there to service the courts and be at their beck and call, so we can move cases and get them resolved quickly, because that's what's, it's really helped the whole system in regards to adding the court, adding other entities like, like pretrial release, adding other community corrections, adding Nelson's program for deferral. That's really helped move cases quicker, and that, all in all, I know we're all concerned about the jail, all in all, but that, that all goes hand in hand. We're symbiotic, the way that we work, and part of the reason it's maintained is because of all that working together, and I've never seen it work better than it has. So I hope that we get our share of it, because without those two people, we're gonna go back to a snowball effect. It may be five, six years down the line, it might be ten years down the line, but cleaning up the mess the last five years, I'd hate to see that turn back to what it was.
Judge, did you want to speak on something here?
Here, supporting probation, I do think it's a little relevant, just to provide the entire council some perspective there, what Chief Probation Officer Bendy's discussing is the pretrial release officer that has been grant funded thus far, and we hope and anticipate that we'll receive the grant for the following year, but to continue to receive that pretrial release officer, you must certify your program. In order to certify your program, you must adhere to all of the state's procedures as set forth by Indiana Office of Court Services. There's a substantial burden to do so because of the requirement, A, to have public defenders at all initial appearances, which are the hearings that he's referencing the day after someone's arrested, and so if we were to have that initial appearance, you'd have to pay for a public defender to be present for that, and currently, we do not do that as strictly. We don't have a hearing the following day someone's arrested to determine whether they are eligible for pretrial release. We review that in a timely manner, but not the day after. So that's one of the large impediments, and there are numerous others. Don't be under any illusion that that's the only one. There are numerous others, and the reason I think that's important is if you were to not be certified, you would then not receive the grant, and then if the council's not supportive of the pretrial release officer, that individual will not be able to be, continue to be funded, and then the courts, prosecutors, probation, community corrections, will all lose that benefit of having that pretrial release officer, screening people at the jail, determining whether they qualify for pretrial release, recommending a bond, providing the court details of what the bond should be, whether they should be released on pretrial supervision to community corrections, et cetera. So that's a little perspective that Officer Bendy didn't necessarily provide, maybe it's too much for the council today, but I hope that's helpful for specifically what he's talking about and how we interact with that at the courts.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. I was, I was almost following what he was saying, and now I...
Yeah.
What you're saying, yes, okay.
I've been hitting it quite often, sorry. Too many athletics. And then the additional officer helps the courts run smoother. We've dedicated officers to particular courts, so they can be there at hearings when they need to be, and it allows us to get pre-sentence investigations done earlier, which also allows the hearings to happen sooner, which allows them to get out of the jail, jail early, and hopefully to DOC or wherever they need to go.
Predict and prevent versus react and repair.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, the alterations that we were gonna propose to the budget, what made the question would be, if we made those alterations, how would that, what possible negative impacts would that have? Is that the...
Well, I was actually, had the question mark there. The idea is you're gonna budget for a probation officer higher, but when you get the grants, we, we account for it later, correct? Is that, is that what I was told, or am I missing something there?
That's what we did last year.
That's what we did last year.
If it, if it comes to this year that we get that check at the treasurer's office, then we can do that. I just got another cover.
We've been provisionally certified for pretrial release.
Right.
Meaning our program has been provisionally certified. That's the mechanism that you receive the grant funding. If they continue that provisional certification, we're eligible for the grant. That's the portion that I don't know whether we will continue that provisional, because we've already asked to be fully certified, and if we don't go that far, they may say, we're no longer gonna let you be provisionally either, because you've led us along for these four years. So that's one little detail about the grant, so...
Okay. I guess it'd be mine. Go ahead.
So I guess we would want to maybe have a show of support from the council to fund these positions from the general fund if they don't receive the grant, and then to move forward with the adjustments as suggested? Would that be...
I think so. I think that's where we're getting at, is that, I mean...
Yeah.
Could I ask for just clarification, because I did not hear what the adjustments were, perhaps you were about to make those?
Well, I wanted to use user fees to help supplement some of these numbers, but I don't want to goof up your possibilities of receiving this money, so I just want to make sure I'm doing the right thing, so...
This is, this is basically the same practice that the council's done in previous years, right?
Right, right. I don't know if I'm missing something here in this discussion.
Can you share the numbers? What were you thinking?
I didn't move anything. I thought we had talked about in the Budget Committee to maybe move some user fees or something and reduce a line item for some of these wages, so I didn't do anything.
Okay. I didn't know if you had proposed numbers that you wanted to propose.
I think if you keep it the same, and then they would get a grant to cover it, you know, if they have a hundred thousand dollar grant that comes in, and it's, you know, want that come back off, anyway? If not, then you guys would be fully funded.
So basically, the only suggestion is to continue with the practice the council...
Do it that way? That might be supplanting, if you, you can't, a lot of those grants you can't supplant. Do the grants for ways that you have to pay it out of grant fund?
Yes. Which is what he's saying, he might not get the, am I understanding you? You may not get the grant money, and so we need to put it in the general fund.
Right.
But what if he gets the grant money?
That's, that's my question.
If he gets the grant money, can we then move some of those wages to that grant?
I think in years past, we, you'd actually had given us that information before our final vote, and I think we made the adjustment in October of last year, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, we did the same thing last year.
Okay. So you should be finding out soon if you get the grant or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully the treasurer will find out, so...
Okay.
So as of now, my desire is not to change anything right now, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll wait and see what happens, and then if it comes through, like we hope it does, then we can make the changes in October.
Yeah.
Is that the answer you're looking for?
Well, certainly, I just would add, I'm only struggling because I don't know the exact balance of user fees. I have some historical idea, so I, when you say put some user fees towards, I don't know the exact amount you're looking at and what dent that puts in the user fees. One, one additional small detail is we, probation officer salaries are set by statute, and so this is what they have to be paid, the state sets that, not us locally, not the judges, and the council has not necessarily gone to that level, and I believe we have then offset the difference of that in the past.
I think that was the intent, is to continue with that practice.
So I just would say, if we've been doing that and that gap continues to grow, user fees continue to go down, there might be an end to that at some point, so I think what we're just getting to is, I just don't want to do something or recommend anything that's going to be short sighted and...
Correct. I think, if I recall, it's been a year, did we not use user fees last year to supplement or pay for some other expenses? I'm pretty sure we did, did we not?
No, just wages.
No, it was just wages. The current cash balance is about three hundred fifty-three thousand, but we did have to make some adjustments based off of that management letter from State Board, so that is going to eat into that three hundred fifty-three thousand that they have, bringing them down to, I'm gonna say approximately two seventy, which, you know, that depends on how long it's gonna last.
We bring in about a hundred fifty thousand a year for user fees, and that is written directly back in, or was in the past, written directly back into the general fund.
And I... Wait, did you say general fund?
Yeah, and that's, that was that management letter in the earlier meeting when we had to do the salary amendment, and he did get a large chunk in the user fees based off of a collection agency that the clerk had signed up with, so the chances of getting those large sums deposited in there are not great, because that was kind of a one-time deal.
We instituted a policy where we were doing collections back in the early 2000s, and we were doing judgment liens based upon that, on people that didn't pay, and I was working with Julie Fox, and we were working with Debbie to do that, and so they went back and started collections on these overdue fees, and so that has been part of the income that we've had over the years, too, is some of that is stuff that is coming in on collections. So on average, I think we can collect off of the cases that we get, the new cases that we get, and the statutory limitations that we can collect from them, we're averaging about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year is what we can bring in as a department for user fees. So if, there, when I started, there was five hundred thousand dollars in that user fee account, and then just over the years, it just has been...
Okay.
It's been attritioning out.
Yeah.
As wages have gone up, we weren't even able to add another individual, because it would have attritioned out even faster, and I think we discussed the other day that we're down to about two years of existence with that fund. It'll be empty in two years.
And I think that, that was about our projection as well, and we thought it would be safe to go through the end of next year with this practice and then make an adjustment, maybe during next year's budget.
Because it'll hit all at once then.
Okay.
And, and that's if you take into account raising the minimum, or the thirty-two thousand dollars that you pay per probation officer per year, that's, that's taking into account, we've got two years if we do the forty-two, which is the minimum salary of a probation officer. So we may have less than two years, depending, a little less than two years, we may not have full funding in two, or, yeah, two fiscal years away. funding in two, or, yeah, two fiscal years away.
Okay. So again, I.
I'm comfortable with moving forward with it.
Okay. Likewise.
Any objections? All right. So we want to.
Thank you, Madam Auditor, for plugging the numbers.
You want to put those into the, into the adjustments in then, or?
I'm not prepared to do that right now. I just.
Okay.
I think maybe we should have just another discussion, but I obviously want to make sure you guys are whole and everything. So I'm inclined to keep it for now, obviously, and just not do anything drastic. Not that it's drastic, but, you know.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're not, are we going to make any changes to their budget?
I'm not making any changes today.
Okay.
All for, all for nothing, right? All that for nothing, right?
Well, the operative word was today.
What's that?
The operative word was today.
See you next month.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
You bet.
Thank you.
I don't know if the next page is 108 or not, but I got a bunch of those. 108? Adults, probation, nothing. User fees, nothing. Page eight, 109, 108, 109. Waits and measures. I tried, but I couldn't find anything. So there's, there's, there's nothing there.
It's a tight one.
EMA. Jack, I've got a few. They won't be, they won't be drastic. Training, three to 2,500. Printing and advertisement, I've got, you might want to speak on that because I'm seeing you're increasing that from one to two. Do you want to tell me about that one?
Yeah.
Because you haven't used hardly any in the past, or the department hasn't. Want to help me out on that one?
So I've spoken to you guys before. We're updating the county's comprehensive plan for emergencies this year, and it's probably going to be rolled out at the beginning of 2025. And it's like this big when it's all said and done. So I bumped up the printing. I've just, I've not had to make an expense in there before, so I'm just trying to err on the side of caution there by bumping that up, how much that's going to cost, how much the distribution of that plan. I'm going to want a fiscal copy for every fire department, every municipality, et cetera. 2,000 might be low. I'm, I'm just not sure how much that's going to cost. That's why I bumped that up with the expectation that that's going to get rolled out. And then years forward after that, we can bring it back down.
I actually had a question mark on, I'll just leave that if that's, okay. Other operating supplies, five, can you help me out with that one?
Yeah. So I'd just like to treat that as kind of an emergency fund. When there's a disaster, it's, it's good to have money that like, if I need to run to the store and buy hundreds of water bottles because there's a whole town that needs water, or one of those other expenses that are needed during an emergency, a lot of other EMAs have funds way, way up there for that. I figured 5,000 was a decent ask. The hope is that you don't have to dip into it too much. What we've spent this year was the solar eclipse glasses that I bought to hand out. So that's kind of just a special project type line. If you want to cut that a little bit, that's okay. If I need to come back for an additional, I'm going to have an additional, the October meeting for you guys for something. So I'm willing to do that.
I'm going to be arbitrary because it's arbitrary, but I'm also looking at the history. But I know you want to do something. So I would say from 5,000 to 3,000. That's my recommendation. Everyone could.
Is there objection?
Can, Toy. And help me out with vehicle repair. I, do we have a car that, that we repair? Or?
So I got a truck at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Not in great condition. It was kind of just sitting. It was, I believe belonged to the surveyors department beforehand. It is currently sitting in that lot over there with a dead battery. It is not in great shape. So this is kind of anticipating that truck's going to need a lot of love poured into it if I'm going to keep it up and running. So.
So, so to summarize, I would go from 5,000 to 3,000 on other operating supplies. I think I just moved training from 3,000 to 2,500, and that, that would be it.
What about travel mileage? I have that from 2,000 to 1,000. Do you have any travel that you're anticipating? Or is that, when you use your personal vehicle, now that you have a truck, do you need it?
I use that, get the fuel from the highway department. That would be used if I am going to a scene for fuel, or if I'm going to any other type of meeting. When I attend training, like I go to the big conference in October, that's why there's been a little spell on training this year, I will just count all the fuel for that as part of that training exercise. So.
So do you feel like 2,000 is necessary? Again, you just don't know.
Should be, should be okay, just because it's all new. So, but, yep.
I'm, I'm inclined to leave it, just to, just to throw in my two cents.
I just, why didn't you?
Anything else on EMA?
See, that wasn't too bad, was it?
A lot better than my wife's haircut. Don't tell her I said that.
Say that again.
Hair wise, no.
Better than his wife's haircut. And Jack, thank you for your help on the Public Safety Committee as well. That's been very valuable. So thank you.
I couldn't even do anything to soil and water, but they gave themselves a haircut. So nothing on soil and water. Page 112. I, maybe we should, we're getting into the health budget now. I do want to, I think we can make a couple of these corrections because we had talked about it in our budget committee. So I'm just going to go off the printed handwritten alteration, the amended sheet. We saw that group life insurance was 30,800. We literally could cut that to 800. It's life insurance, okay? So we're going to cut that from 30,800 to 800.
What page do you want?
I don't know what page because it's, it's.
Did you pull out a?
What line number?
So it's, it's in Fund 1159. I don't have a page number at the bottom. In the upper right, it says 116? Is that six? 116 of 339. Are you on that? Upper right, 116?
Like, is it maybe 800 you said?
Yeah, group life is 800.
Without objection.
Is that 02?
And the reason is just no one, no one's using it. I think it's a big number. It was, it was, I don't know what that was for.
It was a typo, I think.
Well, Sandy's on vacation, so we can clarify this when she gets, we're going to have to clarify this when she gets back.
Because the group life, what I had was 42,535.
That's what I had, too.
Yeah, she sent us an updated handwritten.
Yeah, there was an updated.
Yeah.
That was sent out.
That had changed.
Oh, there was, okay.
And life insurance.
I'll give you a copy.
That is a life.
Well, I'm not sure where that got off kilter somewhere, but it was, that's only like maybe $40 a month for the health department. So you would, I think it was just maybe a typo on that end when it was submitted to us for 30,000. So that easily could go down to 800.
Yeah, because it's like 600 bucks this year. So, so it's just some, some.
Yeah, that, I had a question mark.
There may have been some confusion between health insurance and life insurance at the time that she was putting it together. I don't know. There's always so many things happening.
And these aren't easy to do. She's got two funds, and they're new, and there's rules.
Yeah, there's, there's several items of clarification that we need to get in this budget. So.
Are you cutting anything else?
Well, I think we have to have some discussions going forward. But we did say office rent.
And what fund?
I'm in 1159 again.
Okay.
Again, it's, it's her.
It's the line number.
I don't have a line number. A line number is, it's, upper right is page 118 of 339. From 40,000 to 16,000, that's six months.
0130.
Yeah, with, with the anticipation of moving to the Bowen Building, there shouldn't be any reason why we.
That's only going to be four months, right? Because it's 4,000 a month.
Well, so.
I had written 24.
I know.
So we got, so we had 6,000, or six months.
Well, we, we did, we did change it to six months, and that's, I just did the math based on 2024's rent. It would be $16,000 for six months. Obviously, 32,000 divided by, by two. But the thought is this, they can't maybe close on it till, let's say, I don't know. And that's just, everything lines up. And Jim, you're a realtor. You know, they have to have, they have to have a deal in, in, in January terms, conditions. Maybe they close on it in, in February, and then they got to give a 90-day notice. So then they're obligated for another 90 days. So they might, if they close on it, and if they do the deal, they still might be there till May. Maybe, maybe not. I just didn't want to underbudget for this. Now, now, keep in mind, she's got a lot of funds that she can transfer in the future, but there's, there's.
So are you sticking to the 16?
I'm sticking with the 16. Yeah. Let me not, let me not be long-winded.
Is there objection on 16,000 for rent? Are there none?
And, and the other reason is because we do have to stay within the revenue projection. She's over revenue projection right now. So those two biggies get her underneath and put her in the black.
Just, just for the record, we have a Budget and Finance Committee meeting scheduled to discuss this budget in particular on October 30th at 10:00 AM.
September 30th.
I'm sorry. Yeah. September 30th at 10:00 AM. And Mr. Dalton will be here, and we'll, we're going to go line by line with this because there were, there were a couple of things that were kind of confusing in there. So.
I also wanted to add that Fund 1161, she had crossed out in the written one, wages department had written in stipend and had added $16,000.
Yeah. That's, that's some of the stuff we're going to have to make sure that all ends up on the right line and everything. Yeah.
So those are the only two changes for sure. But again, we'll have to make an alteration to the budget when we pass it in October. We'll have a final version, and it'll be, it'll be square. I didn't do anything else with health department unless anyone else.
Everybody good on the health department stuff? All right.
Just to be clear, you know, if the building is purchased, there is funding in her budget for next year, if we pass it, to pay for repairs and utilities. And so I like the idea, since they wouldn't be paying rent, they would at least be paying, you know, repairs and utilities, so the general fund doesn't have to pick that up. So, okay. And I think she's even got insurance in there as well. So. Sorry. That's all I have for health department for now. Uh-oh. Auditor's office.
I had nothing.
Get your erasers out.
I had nothing.
I've got nothing. Very good job. That's, there's a few departments that really are just spot on. That, that's a good one. Platt mapping, I have nothing on 119. Actually, there's a lot of departments that are spot on.
Yeah.
Actually, a lot. Eligible deduction, page 120, I have nothing. Auditor's. Training fund of 25,000. Next page, I have nothing. Council Budget 122, I've got something. It's, it's going to be a reduction in our salary. We're not going to be taking the increase as much. And so that is in the new salary numbers that we had talked about. It's 4%, right? Something like that. Maybe less. I'm going for less. All right, never mind.
That will be part of our adjustment when we go back in and with the numbers?
Yeah. I believe we're at the end.
That's right.
That's it?
Yeah. We're the last item in the budget. All right.
So we're getting closer. Still want to make some movement on these numbers, but we're getting closer.
All right. Anything for the good of the order? Do we need to pronounce this read a second time? Is that?
The what?
And just so you know, your reduction amount was 96,900 all toll.
How much?
96,900 is what your reduction came to?
About $25,000 an hour.
96. So last year's budget was big in those reductions, and it reflected this year's budget. So.
But this still doesn't reflect the wage adjustments either, so that'll be.
Right.
That, that will be in addition to that. You don't need to have any motion on this. You're still really, I mean, as far as accepting it, we're going to still be working with the numbers. Budget and finances meeting September 30th. And then you will have your numbers well before your October meeting, obviously, so that you can look at that.
All right. Well, we will consider the budget read a second time. And is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Second. I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon and a second by Mr. Falstich for adjournment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And we are adjourned.